... meeting to order. I'd like to welcome my colleagues and staff and any of our constituencies that are listening. We welcome you to do so. The first thing on the agenda is approval of our minutes from the August 22nd meeting. Are there any requested changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marshall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, and that carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to approval of VADI 2024 project agreements. That would be attachment number two in your handouts, and I will refer over to Mr. Sandy.
All right. Thank you so much. So, we talked about this last time, I think. We were successful in a 2024 VADI application with a new partner for us, Zytel. They're a Bedford company. They did some fiber work in Bedford. They also attempted or made application for a project in Carroll County as well as here in Franklin. They were not successful with the Carroll application, but they were successful with our application getting funded. And so, we've been working with them and the state to kind of get us moving along and get us under contract. So, really what we need to do is two things. We, as the county, we sign a contract with the state for the grant project, and then we also turn around and we have a project agreement with the ISP, the Internet Service Provider, which in this case is Zytel. And so, for us, we have two different contracts, and so in your packet is a copy of our contract with Zytel, a draft copy that the county attorney's office has gone over with me and the folks at Zytel have reviewed as well. Everybody's comfortable with this contract. This is one of the pieces of information that the state is looking for us to provide to them before they'll issue their contract with us. And so, we're at a point where we're looking for the approval to go ahead and enter into this contract with Zytel, and then subsequently, we'll also get that contract with the state, and we'll need to sign that as well. Looking for approval for both of those at this point. One of the time constraints may be our next meeting and the time that the state gets their contract wrapped up. The state contract, we really don't have a lot of flexibility with it. It kind of is what it is. And so, looking for the permission to sign that as well as the one that's in your packet, the one that looks like this, which is with Zytel. And again, county attorney's office has looked at this and reviewed it. If you remember, this one, we're, from a monetary standpoint, where the county is only putting in $10,000 to this project, whereas the state is providing about four and a half million, and Zytel's putting in about seven and a half million. So, substantial investments on both sides for these projects, and this is about 2,500 additional sites that we're expecting to cover with this project. Still doesn't get us totally covered, so we're still kind of chugging along, picking off the households as we can. The next step, which I'll get to later, is the BEAD process, where we're, that's the process where we're hoping to kind of get those last several thousand finally covered. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. There are some sample motions in your packet there, if anyone is ready to make a motion for those.
Okay. Does any of the authority members have any questions for Mr. Sandy on the agreement with Zytel and DHCD? Questions, comments? Okay, you have a motion available for your reference in your packet. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of the agreement as submitted.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the grant agreements with Zytel and Virginia DHCD and authorize the authority chair and county attorney to sign the necessary documents to execute these agreements on behalf of Franklin County.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Mr. Sandy?
All right. Thanks so much. I will note, on the project with Zytel, we were able to also do a preauthorization letter. I might have mentioned this at the last meeting as well, where they could go ahead and start engineering prior to having these awards in place, and so that's helped us kind of hopefully gain a month or so in the process
Yeah.
moving along. So, speaking of that, and keeping projects moving along, the next kind of update is VADI 2022, which is the Shentel project. And last time we met, you had updates from Shentel as well as River Street, and we also had Amanda Cox from American Electric Power here. And we talked quite a bit about the make-ready permitting process and just some of the struggles and the challenges there. That process is, if I can simply just kind of describe that process, is our broadband project is basically adding additional wires to the poles, to the electric poles, so adding another fiber wire like you would cable television or something. Each time one of those fibers touches an AEP pole, AEP has to review it, and they have to approve it. And so, the number was over 10,000 poles in the county that were being touched. And so, that is and continues to be kind of the struggle that we have with this project, is getting through that process, getting those permits approved, so Shentel can then get their crews out there to actually do installation and get folks connected. And so, there's, on your podium, there's a letter from Shentel. So, Shentel had reached out again saying, hey, things have really not gotten better. In fact, maybe they've gotten a little slower. Now, again, I'll caveat all this, but I know AEP has storm damage response that they send crews to, and they have a lot of resources that are being pulled in those directions. So, we get that, but I think this isn't just a, this has continued to be an issue for us even when there aren't storms. And so, the storms just make it worse, I think. So, Shentel has kind of described some of the issues and concerns that they have. They have expressed to me that they're concerned at the current pace, that they're not going to be able to meet the, even the extended deadline. So, we extended the deadline for this project to next October. They're saying, hey, we want to give you a heads up. If things continue at this pace, as far as the approval of these permits, we're not going to be able to make next October's deadline. So, that's kind of the crux of where we are and why they're kind of reaching out. So, I said, hey, kind of summarize the concerns, you know, and I have an authority meeting coming up. I think the appropriate next step would likely be sending some sort of official communication to AEP, just really expressing our concerns and the need to really add more resources to the process. That seems to be the issue, is Shentel has offered more resources and even to pay for those resources, and we don't seem to be adding those resources. I think AEP has been reluctant to kind of bring others in. I think they like using their own people that they're comfortable with, but I think we've gotten to a point where we need additional resources to kind of help review these and approve these permits. And what Shentel has suggested, and I've been on some of those conversations, is that you still have the final decision, AEP, you know, you'll still have the oversight of this third party, but we just want there to be more resources, more people in the process to keep these permits going and get these permits issued, because we're coming up on the holidays now, you know, and then we're coming into winter with more storm damage and so forth. So, I think it's critical that we kind of press on them, that some additional resources are needed. And I think one thing Shentel has tried to make clear to me is that a lot of these costs for additional resources and the permitting review is not necessarily an extra cost for AEP. It's actually, a lot of that is being paid by Shentel. And so, through permit costs, and again, they've offered to bring in additional third parties and pay for those third parties. So, it shouldn't really be a cost issue for AEP. It seems to be more of just, there's just not enough resources to go around and do that. So, if it's the authority's pleasure, I can work with the chair of the authority, and we can put together a letter to AEP, and also copy the state to make them aware that, you know, hey, we're pushing, but we're still having these issues and delays that are really kind of beyond our control to a large degree, you know, and just not waiting to a month or two before the deadline, but kind of making sure we're getting that word out there, you know, well in advance that, you know, hey, we need, we need help to keep, you know, pushing, moving the needle, if you will. So, that's, that would be my ask, I guess, at this point, is if the authority feels comfortable with us putting together a letter and sending that off on the behalf of the authority, I think that would be a good next step as we continue to kind of press on AEP for additional help. You know, we've talked about it before, where they've got projects across the state, across their coverage area, that they're also working on. I get that, but we don't want to be the one that gets kind of pushed to the bottom or left behind. So, we're roughly halfway through this project, and so we really need to get a good push to kind of finish on time. So, I don't know if you had any additional thoughts on that, but that would be my kind of ask, and we can work together to kind of put that letter out in the next week or two.
Sure. So, are there any questions or comments from authority members? Marshall?
It'd be good to get on record. Sure, with a letter, but I don't think you're going to get nowhere. I wonder, they've allocated a lot of, I wonder, I feel like they've allocated some manpower back down towards the line in the damaged areas. I'm sure you're going to have a hard time coming up with anybody, or they are.
Yeah. I'm sure that's going to be their response as well, is that the storm damage, but...
Get it on record anyway. That'd be good.
Steve, I was in a meeting this morning, and one of the AEP employees is on the board, and he stated that AEP has fared very well with taking care of the storm damage. So, it was a little contrary to some of the rhetoric around the backup relative to broadband.
Yeah, I guess to Mr. Jamison's point too, is, you know, they do send some outside of the area-
They do.
-to Florida and Georgia and other places as well, but I guess my thing is that can't always be the excuse. We've got to, we've got to find another solution to make this happen. And so, I feel like Shentel had a very good solution of offering just really a whole nother company to say, hey, we'll put this company on the job, and we'll pay them if you just let them do the work.
They've refused that.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from authority members?
I want, Steve, so Amanda seems to know the organization really well, and I wonder, have you talked to her about the best approach with AEP to try to get those resources, like maybe writing the letters, and if you write a letter, who does it go to? What's the best way in to hopefully get the right answer?
Yes. So, yes, been talking to her continuously about this really for months. Before the letter goes out, you touched exactly on, you know, who's the right person that this needs to get to, and what I don't want to do is send something that puts her in a difficult spot, because I think she's doing what she can. I think she, she needs help from above, I think, to make it happen. And so, to your point, I do want to reach out to her now that, if it's the consensus of the authority, to send a letter to say, hey, look, you know, we want to see some more movement here. Who's the right person that we direct this to? And not cause her more issues, but, you know, really help her, help us get a solution.
Exactly. Because she's part of our team.
She is. Yeah, I think she's doing what she can to help us, but she, I think she's ultimately limited in some of those choices and decisions.
At all, Mr. Quinn?
Yep, that's it. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Are you all in support of a letter being sent under my signature on behalf of the authority to just reiterate these points and the necessity? And I would say, you almost use the word severity, that we did not go beyond our deadline of October 2025. We, how many deadline requests? Have we had two? Has it been over-
Just the one extension.
Just the one. I thought we had two.
Yeah, for this project, just the one. Yeah.
So, in the review, it just seems to me that it's AEP Engineering, and then it's Construction Resources. Those are the two main areas from what I've read. Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but-
Construction as in replacing poles and so forth?
Yes, and if they're provider-owned poles, all they need to do is just evaluate whether they can add another line on it. You know, it's a capacity and weight issue, not necessarily a new pole. So, I often wonder how many of those 10,000-plus poles are there versus new pole needing to be identified, because I don't really have any answer to that.
Well, I think what happens, one of the challenges is a lot of the poles are older.
Yeah.
And so, a lot of the poles, I think, are having to be replaced. When I say new pole, that's what I meant, was you were taking the old one out and putting a new one in. So, I think that's, that's the time, you know, once the permit's issued, that's the part that takes the longest amount of time after the permit's issued, is to actually put a new pole in the ground and reconnect the wires to that new pole. So, I think there's a lot of those, just because the age of the poles in our county and probably a lot of the service area of Apco, or they're just older. And so, they have to be replaced. And so, we're not the only project that they have, you know. Of course, they're not everywhere in the state, but they have a number of projects in their territory that they're struggling with this, and we're also not the only locality struggling with this. I can assure you, it's really statewide. And so, I think the state, we'll get into the Make Ready Initiative next, because that's kind of the state's response. Last year was to try to infuse a little bit of money to help kind of push, push things along. And so, I can kind of get into that as far as what the state has done and what the state is looking at.
Sure. I'd just like to get a motion on record to authorize a letter to go to AEP expressing our concerns about the delays in construction.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously.
I have another comment for you.
Oh, Mr. Quinn?
So, Steve, when, I was just thinking through the challenge with evaluating the polls, and I was thinking that there's probably a lot of, I'll call it grunt work and analytical work and research on the front end that could be done by somebody. And then, the real decision-making is what AEP would want to reserve for themselves. And so, I was wondering, maybe part of this letter could be asking them how we could augment their staff, you know, so they obviously don't want to lose control of the poles, right? But they might be willing to have somebody that did research and analytical work and calculations, but didn't make the final decision because they want to do that. So, I just wonder if there's a path where they would take somebody on that would help them instead of jeopardize or risk their control.
Yeah, we can make sure that's in the letter, and those are the kind of things we've been kind of asking for months, and those are the, that's really the proposal from Shentel, was to provide those resources, either on the front end of the permit review and initiation and/or the pole replacement part. They've really offered to provide resources that could help with both of those. And so, at this point, AEP's really been resistant to that. I think, if I can guess, it's because it's not some of their pre-approved people, if you will, organization. They work a lot with outside contractors, but they have kind of their list, and so I think they've been reluctant maybe to add more to their list for whatever reason. But that's what Shentel's really been pushing, is, hey, these folks do work for Dominion, and these folks do work for these other companies. It's really the same thing, you know, they can do a good job for us here as well. And so, we'll continue to keep pushing, you know, for that idea.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sandy. If you'll help me with that, we'll certainly get that out.
Yep. Okay. The next item was just, part of, you know, this issue really came to a head last year in the General Assembly as well during the session earlier this year, because a lot of localities and Internet Service Providers started to pick up about, we're really having issues with this make-ready work. And if you recall, I mean, I'm not going to put all the blame on the power companies, because, you know, the state and the federal government provided all this funding and put it all on these projects and awarded all these projects several hundred million dollars worth of projects across the state. And previously, it had only been about 50 million or 100 million. And so, all of a sudden, you, four or five times the same amount of work, and you're piling that on to what's already in the pipeline. And so, for whatever reason, you know, I don't know if the power company didn't really think about this workload that would be coming, or, you know, who didn't think about it, but all these projects started to hit, and it really bogged down the system because there's just not enough resources to go around. You know, same as contractors and supplies and all those things that we really, I think, going into this, thought getting supplies, because we were coming off of COVID, where I think we thought getting supplies was going to be the number one issue. That really hasn't been an issue. I think a lot of these Internet providers did a good job of kind of ordering ahead, so they would have the supplies that they needed. The real issue that really came to a head this last year is the utility companies and their ability to approve these permits and make these changes to the poles. And so, what the General Assembly did was they allocated some more funding to put into a pot for what they called Make Ready Initiative, and really what that was to help to offset some of the additional costs, and also to provide some resources to find these alternatives, like we were just talking about, like, hey, can we get another third party and pay them to do this work and help speed up the process and move things along. And so, there were a number of different things that they provided the funding for, and so, the first round of that just went into effect and just closed, and they just made awards. And we worked with Shentel to basically recoup some of their costs that they had put in with some of this prepayment that they had done for a lot of this make-ready work. And so, we were awarded three of these, three of these grants, I guess you'd call them grants, and that was really about $300,000. I think there was a copy of this included, that we were successful in getting that funding in the first round. Now, I was telling the chairs that there's going to be two or three more rounds of this funding to continue to find ways to improve the processes, and if there's state money that's needed to kind of push the process along, that it's available through that. And so, it can be through the use of hiring contractors, hiring additional resources. It could be changing how you're doing the work, so it could be putting some of it underground instead of attaching to poles. And so, some of that is happening. I know, that was one of my first questions, and I know the chair had asked me the same thing, is, well, can we just change our project to underground? Well, I think the answer is yes, we can change it to underground, but what that requires is really redesigning it all, which will take several months. And then, it also adds additional costs, because putting it underground is typically is more expensive than going overhead. And so, it can be, but I think what we're trying to balance is how can we do some modification to underground, which doesn't require us to spend a lot more money and a lot more time. And so, we're trying to find that mix of how we keep the project going, how we can kind of make it move faster, but not set us way back where we kind of redesigned the whole project, because again, we're halfway through it. It's all been designed already for the aerial. It's just, we're really just waiting on these permits to allow us to continue the next phase, you know, of the project. So, we're, there is funding. I guess the point of this is the state realized there was a need. They started to put some money into here to help with the process. There are some more opportunities to get additional funding to help kind of move things along. So, between this program and the letter to American Electric Power, hopefully, we can continue to push, you know, push this project forward and keep us on schedule or get us back on track, however you want to phrase that. So, that's the Make Ready Initiative. Next is just-
Mr. Sandy, can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yeah, sure. Any questions on that?
The Make Ready Initiative, is this competitively submitted?
It is.
Okay. All right. So, it's just not readily available?
It's competitive. Each round, you have certain, you have to submit an application, you have to turn it in by a certain deadline. There's certain amounts that you actually can ask for based on the initial amount of your award. So, there's a lot of different parameters that they've kind of set on it.
Thank you.
And so, we were, we were successful. I think, I'm glad, you know, we worked on this first round to kind of get in first, and we were successful in getting that. Hopefully, we can continue to be successful, because there will be some other parts that we'll probably be able to use some additional assistance. And I'll just say here, is that really, this is just a pass-through for us. So, this isn't any money that the county is going to see. It's really just a pass-through for those additional costs that Shentel incurred through the process so far.
Okay. Any other questions about the Make Ready Grant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sandy.
All right. And then, the other, since we're talking about grants, kind of really the next step, which you've heard a little bit about, is we're moving towards the national kind of grant program, which is BEAD, B-E-A-D. We all love our acronyms. So, BEAD is the next kind of big pot of money, if you will, that's becoming available to the state. The state is looking to get $1.4 billion from this program, and it's coming from the feds. And then, this will be really a grant program that's monitored by the state, but it's really funded by the feds. And so, the state has been working with them for really the last 18 months or more on developing these processes and procedures. We, from everything I've heard, Virginia is kind of one of the frontrunners, will be one of the first that are kind of ready to go under this program, because I think they've used a lot of the experience with VADI to kind of help them kind of chart out the path with BEAD. And so, we'll be working with them. Some of the major differences with this program is the county is not the grant awardee. The individual Internet Service Providers make application to the program. So, for me, that's actually good. It's, that's great. We're certainly still involved, but it'll really be a contract between the state and the Internet Provider in these cases. The big, the big thing that will bring us into play is each one of these Internet Service Providers will be looking for a letter of support from the counties, because they get, I think, 10 points on their application if they have a letter of support from the county. And so, I just, making you aware of that, and I also gave you a handout here, which kind of talks about what that process is. Again, it's, we don't have to issue it, but there's also really not a big downfall to issuing it to three or four different providers. What our goal, what I would say our goal should be, is just making sure whoever we're supporting is working towards getting everybody covered. And so, as long as they're working towards that goal, I think we could support it. It doesn't mean we monetarily support anything. We don't have to put any money into these applications, which is another nice piece. We can, but we don't have to. So, the requirements for us have kind of drastically reduced under this program, but just really wanted to make you aware of the request for letters of support, because probably November, maybe December meeting, I'll be coming back to you with those requests. I know River Street is already kind of looking for a letter of support. Shentel is still evaluating what they're going to do with BEAD. Zytel likely will be looking for one as well. So, Century Link is, or Bright Speed has actually reached out as well. So, I think we'll have several requests, and we'll just want to make sure that, however we're supporting it, that we make sure our interests are covered, you know, if those applications eventually get funded, that we're kind of at least in the loop for the project, even if we haven't financially contributed, that we kind of know what's happening, and we know what the kind of ultimate goal is and the ultimate build-out. So, that's really just a kind of a quick update there. Stay tuned. The applications aren't open yet for that, so I think we're still a few months out from that process getting started, but we're getting closer kind of every, every month. And for those of you that are going to VACO, you'll probably hear more about it in some of the various meetings there as well. So, it's obviously a lot of money, you know, $1.4 billion hopefully gets everybody in the state covered. You know, that's the hope, anyway.
Steve, how does that, is there going to be an interface from BEAD to VADI? Is VADI going to, I mean, is the state of Virginia basically going to be able, in their vernacular, to pull back on funding VADI grants because of BEAD?
Yes. If I follow your question, yeah, they really won't have to continue to fund VADI the way it's been funded. I think there'll still be some various needs for funds there for different programs, and one that I would point out as part of our legislative agenda is that we would like to see that some of that BEAD money be spent to increase cellular coverage across the Commonwealth. And so, one, the state could fund some of that, and or local governments maybe could also contribute, kind of like we did in the VADI program, is, you know, we could leverage some of those dollars to get more antennas put up in more remote areas of the Commonwealth. I don't want to sound like a commercial, more coverage in more areas, but that's really what we're looking for. I think Blaine County, I guess, recently with, and some of the other counties recently with the storms, I mean, I think they were out of cellular coverage for a lot of their areas, just because they probably only had a few sites to start with, and so they didn't have a lot of redundancy. So, we all know there's still areas in Franklin County where you have no cell service. VADI really didn't do anything for cellular service, and so I think the next step that- And so I think the next step that we're pushing with the General Assembly and with DHCD is, hey, let's focus now on this next phase, if you will, next step to increase cellular coverage. And that not only helps all individuals and students out there, I think it also has a big public safety component to it, and it has a big agriculture component. I mean, you've got a lot of tractors with a lot of technology, and if you can't connect to anything, it doesn't do you a lot of good. And so I think there's a lot of reasons for the state to kind of push that needle. And I've been trying to toot that horn, you know, where I can, and I think it's, you know, getting some traction. So I think to your original question, I think that's kind of what VODI maybe morphs into is funding some other initiatives to kind of help, you know, with the whole connectivity thing.
We'll just pause here up for questions from the authority members with regard to BEAD. Any questions, clarifications that you'd like to see answered?
No.
Okay.
Ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jamison?
Steve, I don't know who to talk to. You give me a name and number, I'll call them. But this morning, Shentel ran a line through my property, right through my hay field to another house. And you would think, I mean, you know, they would have some kind of GIS or something to stop it. Actually, it was my daughter's house they were hooking up. And my 10-year-old granddaughter said, hey, they're coming up through Papa's field here. So my daughter went out and stopped them. They rerouted it, but it's still in my field. They went around the edge of it and all. So they need to do a little bit better. Now, I understood there were some circumstances. They went, the pole that whoever come out and coordinated with the homeowner as far as installation from Shentel said they were coming from one pole. When a crew got there, they had to go back to the other pole down line because of the wire in the box or something there.
Okay. Yeah, I can get you a contact.
If you give me a contact, I'd like to. And also, I think last month, Nick brought up a question about how many homes in each district were hooked up.
Yep. I'm working on that. My GIS guy has been out on some medical leave, so hopefully for the November meeting or before, I'll be able to provide you that information.
And I asked about the wireless down in Calhoun, a tower down there.
I did reach out on that, so let me follow back up on-
Is there a limit on the minimum number of people that use that tower before the county has to kick in any money, or is that a problem, or is that in there at all?
No.
No cost to it?
No.
How few are on it?
How few are on it?
How few are on it?
That's what I need to follow back up on. I did reach out to the company to get that information, so I had to reach back out to get that number. But there are users on it. I just don't know what that exact number is right now. So he can give me that. Hopefully, before you leave today, I'll be able to-
That's fine.
My guess is it's probably around 30, but I don't know for sure. So there's not really a minimum. There'd be, kind of the converse would be actually be a maximum. So there would be a maximum that one of those sites could kind of hold, you know, a maximum number of users, so.
There is no charge if, you know, they don't have a target number that we don't have to pay the county, doesn't have to kick in money?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Mitchell?
Steve, I'm going to ask my regular broadband meeting question. The last update I was given for the Verizon on the tower on 890 was October 31st for that to be operational. Do you know if that's changed or?
I knew that question was going to come up, so I've-
Because I was sitting at Snow Creek School this morning, and I could not use my phone.
So the response I got was that they're still waiting on their 5G equipment antenna orders. There's a national backup. Their order is due mid-October, which that's next week, right? Or today?
Today.
Once their equipment is in the warehouse later this month, then they can allocate them to the projects. So I don't have a date for you other than that's the latest update I got is as soon as those things get in the shop, then they can say, okay, this one's going to Snow Creek, you know, this equipment is going to Snow Creek. And then they can make their application for building permit and be able to put it up. So I'm still hopeful it's this year, but that's literally from 11 o'clock this morning, that was the update, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, I do have a question. Are we going to enter into any MOUs with respect to BEAD and vendors that are working on our behalf?
I think that's a question that we can discuss as far as, you know, when we do letters of support, how much is our support worth? You know, like, how much do we want to be tied to the project? You know, I think at a minimum, we would want to have, yeah, at least a simple MOU that says, hey, you're going to give us constant updates, you know, as to project activity, you know, those kind of things. I think some of it depends on how involved we are and how involved we want to be, if that makes sense.
Oh, it does.
So if we're putting in millions of dollars, we probably want to be much more involved. If we're not putting in anything, then there may be a lesser degree that we want to be involved. So that would be something I would ask you guys to think about is, you know, prior to the next meeting, is just, you know, what do we want to have before we issue a letter of support and they're successful getting the grant? What does that relationship look like, you know, for us and them and the state kind of moving forward? Because as I mentioned earlier, the state is not going to be in a contract with us. They're going to be in a contract with the ISP specifically, but certainly we want to keep abreast of what's going on and be aware of what's happening because me and you guys will still be the ones to get those phone calls that, you know, wondering where the service is.
And these are Franklin County-centric projects. That's the reason that I ask. Would it be asking too much to see if you could maybe draft something in terms of maybe some suggested draft bullets for an MOU to let the authority look at those, maybe just to stimulate our thinking, whether we want to expand upon those or have questions?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on BEAD? Great questions. Okay. Steve, did you have any other business under your updates?
I do not. I think that was all I had.
Okay. Thank you for all of your updates.
Sure.
At this time on the agenda, we've reserved time for comments by the authority members. So Mr. Jamison, do you have anything?
Ma'am.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Carter?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Tatum?
I'm good.
And Mr. Quinn?
All set.
And I have nothing. So hearing that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the broadband authority meeting.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Jamison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you all for your time this afternoon.
Our first line of business will be our invocation, a pledge of allegiance. And before we have our prayer, I just would like to offer our condolences to Supervisor Mike Carter for the loss of his father last week. And I just want you to know our thoughts and prayers have been with you and will continue to be with you. But this time, I ask Supervisor Marshall Jamison, if he will, to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Nick Mitchell.
All stand, please.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Lord. We just ask that you would be with us, guide us, give us wisdom, Lord, give us discernment. Lord, we also lift up the victims, Lord, of all the hurricane victims we've had, they would just be with them, Lord, the ones that suffered, that lost their property, Lord, also lost family and lives. Just watch over them, dear Lord. Just that you just continue to be with Ronnie, dear Lord, and give him a quick recovery. In Christ's name we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any thoughts, concerns about the agenda, anyone this morning? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let me see, none that it was unopposed. Recognition of VACO Achievements Award Program presented by Jeremy Bennett, Director of Governmental Affairs, Virginia Association of Counties. We have Jeremy Bennett from VACO with us today. He's going to come up and discuss the VACO Achievement Awards Program, followed by Jeff Ekinott, who will speak to us about See a Smile Winning Program. Mr. Bennett will then pick things back up, and we'll have some discussion about the VACO legislative agenda. Mr. Bennett, thank you.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Administrator Whitlow. My name is Jeremy Bennett, Director of Intergovernmental Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO. And as always, it is my distinct pleasure to be back in Franklin County, especially if I can proceed the board meeting with lunch at Whole Bean and with the knowledge that on my way back, Homestead Creamery is actually on my route, so looking forward to that. But more importantly, it is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Award. And for the benefit of your constituents, who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO has existed since 1934 to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties in many ways. First is through our advocacy at the General Assembly and at the federal level. We also support counties through our educational programs, member services, and communication efforts. I should acknowledge also that Supervisor Smith is also part of our VACO Steering Committee as our Vice Chair of our General Government Steering Committee. But in 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. And today, I'm very proud to present Franklin County with its Achievement Award for the year. This is VACO's 22nd Annual Achievement Awards Program, and in this year, we received 145 entries, of which only 45 winners were selected from 32 counties. So with only 31% of entries selected as winners, it is a truly competitive program. This is Franklin County's sixth Achievement Award, and Franklin County won in 2012, 2020, twice in 2021, and also in 2022, which I think was the last time I was here to present for your library automated program. So there are several criteria our judges followed as guidelines. Does the program offer an innovative solution to a problem or situation or delivery of services? Does it promote intergovernmental cooperation? And is it a model for other counties to emulate, among other criteria? So I am going to turn it over to Jeff to actually speak more about the program. But, you know, the off-grid solar backup radio site definitely impressed our judges, and, you know, I'll say it was a great model for other counties to consider going forward. But before, once Jeff speaks, maybe, and we present the award, maybe we can just get a picture of the folks and, you know, can share that with our membership at our annual conference and on our website, if that's also okay with you. But with that, I will turn things over to Jeff.
Thank you, sir. So Mr. Vice Chairman, Administrator Whitlow, and members of the board, I want to express my gratitude for a few minutes to, I think really to brag on some team members that made this possible. But I also wanted to start just by expressing my thanks as a board and to my direct leadership team for allowing folks like myself and my partners to foster creativity. I truly think this is an innovative and really a creative solution. It's also a very fiscally competitive or fiscally conservative solution to solve a safety issue in Boones Mill. So for that, I want to express my appreciation because folks like yourself make a creative environment possible. So with that, I wanted to just tell you a little bit about the project, and we'll get into some frequencies and talk about the RF spectrum. I'm only kidding, but Steve knows that I would love to chat with you anytime about those fun details. So I'd like to set up the problem. It's a problem many of you know, and it's a problem that we've sought federal assistance and funding for. Our radio system unfortunately has a very isolated and very small gap in coverage, and that's in the town of Boones Mill. Now, we wouldn't notice that if it was, say, on top of a mountain covered by trees where once in 10 years we're on a search and rescue mission. But regretfully, this coverage gap exists in a populated area along the State Corridor 220, Boones Mill Road, Bethlehem Road, and many other isolated areas in between. And so our law enforcement officers, the Boones Mill Town Police, and our fire rescue members from Public Safety and the Boones Mill Volunteer Fire Department frequent this area and often remind me that their portable radios don't always work. So that's effectively the problem that I wanted to try to put a stopgap measure in. Like I mentioned, we are seeking funding and support for a definitive solution, but that solution in 2023, we didn't even know if we would receive federal funding to implement a tower with all the proper repeater infrastructure. So the thought that came to my mind was installing an analog radio repeater site. What I had to conquer at that point was I needed land. Land is not hard or not easy to come by. I needed a proper elevation for some transmitter antennas. I couldn't do it alone. I needed assistance of a tractor. I needed some infrastructure, a concrete pad to be poured. And so the public-private partnership as well as the intergovernmental partnership that we received to make this happen, the town of Boones Mill, PSG Electric, the Boones Mill Volunteer Fire Department, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and the communications shop all came together to realize this solution. And so this is a brief timeline. I will not go into detail here, but we knew that there was a problem back in 2021. Granted, we knew there were challenges before then, but the study that Morcom did in '21 that launched our funding request for a definitive solution with some assistance from a federal grant was this study. And you can see that conspicuous little gray shape. That's essentially a coverage gap in our 800 megahertz infrastructure, and it regretfully sits right at that intersection of 220 Bethlehem Road and Boones Mill Road. So we knew that there was a problem, and we now have data that supported it. What I needed to find was a location that had an elevation that could support this infrastructure. I also needed power, but I didn't want to burden the taxpayers with a costly temporary solution, so that introduced a solar option for us. So what we ended up doing is using equipment we already had on hand. We reprogrammed it. We were able to secure solar for a very low cost, and I've been very thankful for that. And we secured volunteer labor to resurrect the roof of this 35-foot-tall water tank. This water tank's no longer in use, and you can see by the, just the picture at the site, this was kind of our vision. You know, it's always fun to draw, but to really see something come together takes team members and cooperation. So what we had to do is, this was a town-owned property in Boones Mill. They gave us access. We had an existing easement. We were able to rehabilitate a roadway, again, with volunteer support. This is your ground-level picture. We had a lot of tree trimming and work to do, but this came together with volunteer labor. Many members of the town of Boones Mill and the Boones Mill Fire Department brought tractors on a Saturday. They cleared the road you see here in this picture. We had the chief, Riley Peters, who couldn't be here today, and a Boones Mill fire member is there with BT Fitzpatrick and myself pouring a concrete slab. We needed that slab for our small equipment shelter. We just so happened to have that metal shelter left over from our old radio system. So again, really trying to reuse and recycle where possible. That took us to some of this work. You can see many faces here, some you might recognize, but PSG Electric loaned us a bucket truck. They also helped us for the day with many of their tools that we don't have. We were able to install a 12-foot mast antenna, and you can also see in the lower-left corner some pictures of the solar infrastructure that I was able to secure. And today, this site runs 24/7, 365. Officers are able to rotate their radio knob on their portable radio to the analog channel. That's probably the only gap in this solution being a permanent one. And they're able to communicate from the Shell Station, from Canada's. They're able to communicate up and down the 220 corridor. And the same is applicable to our members of the Volunteer Fire Department at Boones Mill. They can rotate their channel knob, and they can communicate a distress or emergency signal directly to dispatch, which is something they couldn't do before this tower was made possible. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank a lot of people, and I will likely forget a lot of names. So I will thank BT and the town of Boones Mill. We couldn't have done it without their partnership. They also split some funding with us in that they purchased the concrete for the pad. I brought some used radio equipment, things like that. The Boones Mill Volunteer Fire Department, we couldn't have done it without them. They brought their brush truck. We mixed the concrete. They were able to push the road in for us, trim the trees. PSG Electric, Brad Basham and DJ Kennedy, who couldn't be with us today. They're a local operator. They're also both avid volunteers at Rocky Mountain Faram. They saw the need for this, and they donated their time, their equipment, and their bucket truck. Finally, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. I'm joined by some of my- Finally, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. I'm joined by some of my team members and the Sheriff's Office as well. We couldn't have done this without them. Always happy to take you out for show and tell if you're out and about one day or weekend and want to see some of our great radio infrastructure. But I'll close by just saying thank you for the opportunity to do something creative like this to help public safety and the county.
Thank you for your service to the county as well.
Absolutely.
Jeff? Well, I was going to say, I think, a round of applause for Franklin County, first of all, and for the folks putting it together. And have the Achievement Award here, so I'm not sure if you want us up there or...
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, as the Board takes their seats, I would like to thank Jeff Ecrinat. He's quite modest, a lot of that creativity. But I'd like to say, Jeremy Bennett in Franklin County, that's some very wise and astute Franklin County engineering, and it's get it done. And our folks continue to amaze me in how they do that in our operation. So, Jeff, you're mighty modest and your team, but thank you very much for all that effort.
All right. Moving right along.
Yes, sir. And I believe I'm the next agenda item as well. I was asked by Steve Sandy in Franklin County to provide a legislative update, kind of an overview of the VACO legislative process, as well as some issues that we anticipate seeing some repeats, some new ones, the coming 2025 General Assembly session, which someone of my friends posted is less than 100 days away, which is always something to look forward to. But anyway, I appreciate to share that information about VACO, our legislative process and draft priorities. We've been working this entire year diligently to craft our draft 2025 legislative program that reflects the diverse needs and challenges faced by local governments across the Commonwealth. This process begins with our regional meetings across the state. As you all know, you were kind enough to host us last year for Franklin County's region, where VACO staff will travel across the Commonwealth or hold virtual meetings with our members to solicit feedback on our existing program and, again, challenges and opportunities that you think we need to be addressing going forward in the Commonwealth. So the VACO staff take all that feedback from our members, from you, and we draft a legislative, preliminary legislative program, which is then presented to our eight policy steering committees at the VACO County Official Summit in August. We receive feedback from our members on those committees, such as Supervisor Smith, and we take that feedback and make edits to the program for it to be presented at those same steering committees at our annual conference in November. Those steering committees will then take final action from their end on their platforms, including priorities, and submit that to the Resolutions Committee, which is comprised of the Chair and Vice Chair of each of the steering committees, as well as VACO's Executive Committee, will have their chance to have input into the process. And then that is sent to the full membership during our annual business meeting at the annual conference for each county to weigh in on and ultimately ratify. So as we head into 2025, there are several key areas that will be the forefront of our legislative efforts. I just want to take a few moments to highlight the most pressing issues at a high level and what we expect from the General Assembly this coming session, many of which, you know, do overlap with Franklin County's legislative program. So one of our big ones, and one near and dear my heart, is education funding. I'm sure you've been following the work that stemmed from the 2023 J-Lock Report. There's now a Joint Subcommittee on Elementary and Secondary Education that is making recommendations to the General Assembly. We're very involved with them on operational funding and restoring, you know, balance in the funding formula relationship between state and localities. We also will continue to pursue efforts in regard to school construction. Obviously, our 1% build didn't get over the finish line last year. Whether, if it's brought forward again, we will support it this coming year. But if not, we anticipate maybe with a new administration pursuing it more aggressively in that time. We continue to support broadband expansion. I know, obviously, your broadband committee met earlier, talking about some of the opportunities and challenges. So until we have full coverage, you know, additional resources and local flexibility will be priorities for VACO, as will housing and workforce development. I know that's an issue across the Commonwealth and across the nation. So looking for creative solutions without infringing upon local authority will be also some of our priorities and definitely a topic of discussion at the General Assembly. For transportation and infrastructure, we've seen massive federal infusions through the IAJA and other federal programs. We are committed to making sure that the state doesn't offset their commitment to transportation funding with those federal dollars, and we continue to receive the support or increase the support needed for all of our communities. I'll just say, energy is also a big issue. We actually have an energy podcast that my colleague Joe Lurch has put together. I'd encourage you all to check it out. But it's really talking about the challenges that we face with increased demand from data centers or, you know, issues with local land authorities through solar, data centers, et cetera. It's definitely an issue that we expect legislation on and will continue to work on. And really, the overall, the two big areas that kind of bind all these issues together are, of course, preventing unfunded mandates being passed on to you and preserving local authority and control, whether that's over land use or anything else. So those are just kind of some really high-level stuff, Mr. Vice Chair. Happy to take questions about further issues, but I'll just say in closing that, you know, we really appreciate the feedback that we get from our members such as yourselves. It helps us be better representatives for you and better advocates in Richmond and beyond. So with that, I'll just say thank you for the opportunity to present on those issues, and I'm happy to answer any questions if the Board has them.
Thank you for coming, and I can't say enough how much we appreciate the support that we get from VACO and all of your partners in VACO. We don't always show our appreciation, but we do appreciate what you do. Members, are there any questions or anything you'd like to say to Jeremy? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeremy, thank you. How do you access that energy podcast you mentioned?
If it's all right with the Board, I can send that to either Administrator Whitlow or to Deputy Administrator Sandy, and he can share that with the group. It is on our website. There's about four or five episodes, and I was actually, I'm a bit of a nerd, but I was listening to some of them on the way down as I went. So, and Joe does a great job. But I'll make sure that you all have a link or access to that so you can listen at your own time.
Thank you for coming. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, if I may. Jeremy, thank you so much for being with us. It's such a pleasure for us to have the ability to work with VACO, and I feel like you all are family at this point, all the time I've been spending with you. But it's time that we're all learning together, and appreciate that very much. Excuse me. I would say holistically and generally speaking, these unfunded mandates as they relate to school resource officers and as they, with the med box, with, you know, for our public safety side of the picture. These are two things that I know appear with VACO, and you all are advocating vigorously for those things, and it appears on our legislative agenda as well. So we just want to reinforce, I think, those two things. You know, we're getting hit with, unfunded mandates is kind of a pickup term, but the reality is it has a real impact on our tax base and our taxpayers. Unfunded mandates equate to tax increases. And so we've really got, we appreciate the support that you all are providing us in that regard. So I was telling Jeremy before the meeting, when we as a Board work on crafting our legislative agenda every year, one of our main reference points is the VACO legislative summary that we get. And we stay very closely aligned with VACO, you know, and then we have some of the more tailored issues to Franklin County. But it just is really good to be part of an overall effort, Jeremy, that we can hold hands and we can look to get some things done. And I know VACO is highly regarded with the General Assembly and so forth. So again, we appreciate those opportunities, and we stand ready to support VACO in any way that we can.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Jeremy? Don't see any. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Enjoy your ice cream.
Okay. Moving right along, moving to the consent agenda. The Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Vice Chair, if there are no exceptions, I would move the approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion before a call for a final vote? Yeah, I'm going to call for a final vote, and then I'm going to go through each one of these proclamations that we just approved. So all in favor, Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
We just, on our consent agendas today, we just approved these four proclamations. And I want to just go through each one of those real quick if I can. The first proclamation is proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This first is to proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There will be an event on October 26 at 5:00 PM at the Rocky Mountain Farmers Market hosted by the Franklin County Resource Center Promoting Safe Families. And I have a note here that Angela Phillips is going to be here, but I also see Katrina Hancock here. And so at this time, Katrina is here from the Franklin County Resource Center. And would you like to come up and say a few words to us? Tell us how things are going, and good to see you again today.
I wasn't expected to speak, but I will. So I am Katrina Hancock. I'm actually with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. I'm the Domestic Violence Advocate Coordinator. And I just want to appreciate you all taking the time to recognize this proclamation. I've been doing this work for a long, long time, and the support of the community, the Board of Supervisors, the Sheriff, the town, all of us, that we really appreciate the support.
Thank you, Katrina, for all that you do. I've known Katrina a long time, got to work with her for years when I was with the Sheriff's Department. And there's probably not another person in this county that I know of that works any harder in her career and what she does to serve the citizens of Franklin County. Thank you, Katrina.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone have anything they'd like to ask or say to Katrina while she's here?
We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
It goes without saying, and the services you provide are understated for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Katrina. I don't see, is Angela here?
I don't see her, no, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving right along, our Fire Prevention Month proclamation. The second item on the agenda is to proclaim October 2024 as Fire Prevention Month. The Board of Supervisors urges all residents, landlords, businesses, and other property owners to heed important safety measures promoted by National Fire Prevention Month, and further to recognize and commend all firefighters, both volunteer and career, along with first responders who provide valuable services to educate, prevent, and fight fires. Again, we can't say enough to our staff, volunteer, and career staff, as well as Sheriff's Department and other first responders here that serve Franklin County. In the aftermath of these storms that we've seen hit our country over the last couple of weeks, we can see the need for support for our first responders. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you to all of our first responders, both career and volunteer. Next, National First Responders Day proclamation is the third proclamation. It's to proclaim October 28, 2024, as the National First Responders Day. This includes non-11 operators, law enforcement officers, firefighters, EMS, special operations, and other roles in the public safety sector, both volunteer and career. We call upon all citizens to observe this day to honor our brave first responders and to pay tribute to those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Looking around, do we have any first responders here today? If so, please stand and be recognized. Eric, appreciate you being here, buddy. And I saw Pat go out in the hallway. I don't know if she's trying to round up some more, but I will say that it's been a pleasure and an honor to be able to serve Franklin County as a first responder. And I take that a great deal of pride in being a first responder for the citizens of Franklin County. And thank you, Eric, and please convey that message to all of our brothers and sisters with the Sheriff's Department. And lastly, our fourth item is to proclaim November 15, 2024, as Geographic Information Systems Day, or GIS Day, to acknowledge those that have chosen GIS as their profession to improve the lives of citizens and to recognize and support efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. We encourage citizens to learn more about the selection of geospatial resources made available by Franklin County GIS offices. Again, for our men and women that work in our GIS office here at Franklin County, we convey our sincere thank you for all the hard work that you do in serving the citizens of Franklin County. Okay. With that said, Brian Costella.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairman Tatum, members of the Board, Mr. Whitlow. A pleasure to be here for the Viaduct Road Report for October. We'll begin with the previous 30 days of activity. Route 601 Dudley Amos is now complete. We have on Mary Bet Hollow, Route 807, we had a low-water structure replacement, and that's now complete. And then on 220, we have some paving that's been completed. There are some line markings still to be installed, but they'll be coming back through to complete that work. Looking out for the next 60 days, really what we're doing is a lot of primary mowing. This will be our final round, so we're active on 220, 116, all of our primaries. And then on Route 40, we just completed a pipe replacement project, and that's got to be paved still, but we'll be back to do that with our contract. And then Route 602, we have a lot of work up in Callaway area. We have two pipe projects, and then we have a bridge project that's actually starting today. So you probably see a lot of detour signs, and we've done our best to put, I forget how many signs we have out there, trying to direct traffic around. But we know this is a little bit of an inconvenience, but we did complete the very first pipe replacement project, and we're moving on to the second one. So hopefully, we'll finish up earlier than the six weeks anticipated. But the bridge project will, it'll probably be a good two-month project as they anticipate, because I think it's substantial rehabilitation they have to do to that. So lots of activity there on those two, 602 and 641. We have some patching that's going on actively on 619 and paving that's going on there. And I mentioned the primary mowing already. Moving over to page two, we have a couple of safety studies that were completed, but there are no recommended changes on those. So nothing substantial there. And then just lastly, we have our bundled projects on Route 220. They are scheduled to have the bids come back later this month. So hopefully, next month, I can present where we stand, hopefully, with some projects moving forward on the 220 corridor. So that concludes my presentation, and if you all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I do have one. You mentioned primary mowing. Are y'all going to do any more secondary mowing?
We will, yes. Once we complete our primary, then we'll go back on our secondaries.
Okay. I was just curious. On my way home from work this past week, last week, actually, on Purnell Switch Road, I had a close encounter with Yogi, and he came out of nowhere. And it would have been helpful if the grass had been cut back a little bit.
Right. We have been to some of the intersections where we have some sight distance to try to do some weed eating to at least get those spots done, but we will complete another round.
I appreciate. Anybody else have anything for Brian? Go ahead, Lord.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, there.
Nice to have you with us. Just a couple quick questions. I was going to ask about Scruggs. I think you just answered that in turn.
Right. We have been to some of the intersections where we have some sight distance to try to do some weed eating to at least get their spots done, but we will complete another round.
I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything for Brian? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Hi, Brian.
Hi there.
Nice to have you with us. Just a couple of quick questions. I was going to ask about scrubs. I think you just answered that in terms of mowing. Do you know what the status is of, I think you guys undertook looking at those rumble lines in my district? I haven't seen the disposition on that yet. Is there a report ready?
Yeah, actually, I could share some information with you. I didn't bring it with me here today, but I can share some location information with you.
Okay.
Be glad to do that through maybe Mr. Whitlow and get you an email. But the short of it is, is we do have some recent paving that's been done, so those areas ought to be eligible for us to put those centerline rumble strips in. But I'll get you more information on that.
Is it good news or bad?
No, it's good news, yeah. They actually recommended the centerline rumble strips.
Great, great. And the only other thing I had was, is there a status on the Lost Mountain Road project?
As far as the intersection, the roundabout?
Yeah, I mean, I know it was in engineering, right?
Yes, ma'am, it's still in engineering. I think we have a meeting coming up on that, maybe later this week.
Okay.
So, yes, it's in progress.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
I appreciate everything you're doing up in Callaway.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I can get home or not, but I...
If you have any trouble, give me a call.
I will.
It is quite confusing, and it can be, because the route numbers change right there in Callaway, Callaway Road, but it's 602, 641. So trying to get those signs out there to not be overly confusing was a little challenge.
I believe you got it marked pretty good.
Great.
Oh, what is the status on NAF Road that were you requesting?
It's still in our traffic engineering section, being reviewed. It usually takes several months before we can get, once we submit it. So I know we had submitted, oh, after the meeting before last, I believe, the traffic study. So it can take upwards of four to six months to complete it. Just depends on where it is in their queue, but I'll keep you updated on that.
Appreciate you, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have anything for Brian? Don't see anyone. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to the other Brian, Brian Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Whitlow. So, yeah, we have two Bryans and two Mr. Carters, and so sometimes it gets a little confusing, so... The, for the first item, I have three items, so I apologize. I'll try not to wear out my welcome. The first item is our monthly finance report, and so this will be for data through September 30, so a quarter of the fiscal year. Twenty-five percent is what we would be anticipating. So to look at your general fund, your overview, basically, we're pretty much in the benchmark of what we'd expect. One thing that I want to watch closely is your other local taxes, is it 24.7% of budget, so it's below the 25% benchmark. That is our monthly taxes, where sales tax, meals, and occupancy taxes are reported. So the monthly taxes that are more indicative of the economy are trailing a little bit as a percent of budget. Very slight, and so not a cause for concern, but something we want to watch. And of course, property taxes will be due upcoming, so you'll see that number jump fairly significantly as we get to the December 5th, towards the December 5th due date. On the expenditure side, all of ours are at 25% or below. The only one that is not is that General and Financial Administration. And that's the same cause that it typically is with insurance and a lot of maintenance service contracts, information technology, all of those that are paid upfront at the start of the year. So to graphically show that, you can see on the revenue slightly increased year-over-year, just barely. Show that a little bit more in the significant categories that make up our budget. You can see general property taxes slightly ahead of where they were this time last year. Other local taxes is actually ahead a little bit of where they were last year, so we're still collecting well. I'll show you a little bit of that breakdown. It's tightening, though, from where it has been in prior years. And revenue from the Commonwealth, that's still a big driver of that. Actually, a little bit extra money from the Compensation Board with some increased funding that the state came through for our constitutional officers. We budgeted for that, but that's an increase year-over-year in the actual. But the biggest driver of that is our CSA reimbursement, which means we also spent more money in order to get reimbursed from the state. So have a little bit more detail on that as well. So local sales tax, year-over-year through September, it's almost $76,000 of an increase. It's 3.6%. So it is an increase, but as you can tell, it's a lot tighter if you look at two years ago. And so now, for us, we're at almost 28% of budget, so that's above our 25% benchmark. So we're looking okay, and as you'll notice, we're two months behind on sales tax, if you'll remember, because the state collects it and then processes back to the county. So the peak would be February, but that will be December sales, and so we're still trending okay, as opposed to occupancy tax, where the peak is in the summer, where people are vacationing. Meals tax is actually down a little bit, almost $2,700 from year-over-year from where we were last year. That's about a half a percent decrease. We had a good month. It was further behind through August, and so through September, we caught up a little bit. That's still 33.47% of budget, so again, ahead of that 25% benchmark. So from a county budget standpoint, we're doing just fine. Transient occupancy, CSOS, as you can tell from the graph, year-over-year. And so it's been a little bit more consistent for the first quarter of this fiscal year. You could see kind of this line here that's moving up. And so not the big swings we saw the prior two years. And so that September collection also helped, because it was further behind. So that's about 26,000 above where we were this point in time last year, 15.7%. And it is trending at 45%, well ahead of budget. What we would anticipate, as you'll notice, is the decline as we go into the colder months. So even though it's 45% of budget right now, that number's going to come closer to equalizing as we get to the slower period. So for general fund expenditures, we had a low month in August. We had an increase in September. A lot of that appears to be timing of the transfers for school operations and county, and also just some of the monthly accounts payable invoices that we pay. There doesn't seem to be any significant trend on what's driving that up. It was down last month, just up this month, but not a significant concern at this point. As we noted, all of our expenditure categories are below budget, where we would expect them to be this point in time in the fiscal year. Categorically, to show that to you, so you can see the increases, public safety and health and welfare, which typically are where we see them. That's also the greatest percent of our budget, as you'd expect. And so we would expect some level of increase. We did fund increases in the budget, personnel, some additional costs for maintenance, fuel, some of those items. For health and welfare, I'm going to break that down a little bit. Biggest driver of that is CSA. Don't panic. The biggest chunk of that is a timing with the audit and the year-end adjustments. And so for the October reporting period, that should correct itself somewhat. What we are seeing, though, is still an increased trend in CSA. We don't see that subsiding. It's a statewide issue. And so the same shortages in facilities, or the lack of choice in a sense of where our kids, the same complexity of the cases, we're still seeing. And so, you know, the state has made a big push on learning loss. Well, that equates to other behaviors and things in the classroom as well, that may go to a private day environment, or where you might have a foster care environment, residential environment, and so those are still driving our program. So fund balance, updated slightly from last month, and so these are still un-audited. The auditors were here last week. Seem to be, based on comments, a good audit. We should have a final report for you by the December meeting, maybe November, but I would say probably the December meeting. So when we look at, right now, our unassigned fund balance is about $47.8 million. When we back out the rollovers that were approved, or the funding that was approved at last month's meeting, the anticipated school year-end surplus, which is a lot less than it has been in prior years, as ESR funds have expired. So the $100 million school budget, you know, there was about $367,000 in cash remaining, and so that's cutting it pretty close. And so certainly made use of the dollars that they're allocated. We have our 20% minimum, so that's based on the estimated collections of revenues based on prior fiscal years. That's just over 24 million. So above our policy minimum is about 20.9 million right now that we would have in our unassigned fund balance. And so, and that would be consistent where we would expect. If you remember that 40-ish, 45, 47 million dollar number, it's pretty consistent with what other localities have around us when Davenport provided that benchmark analysis. So it's a good barometer for that. We're pretty consistent with what our others are doing, and certainly has improved our standing for the financial, the rating agencies. Okay? We still have our budget stabilization of a million dollars, and our capital reserve is still sitting at $745,000. And so economic update, the CPI did increase 2.4% in September. It's getting closer to that 2% benchmark rate, but the struggle is core inflation increased 3.3%. And so, and when it says core inflation, that excludes food and energy. So you're really talking housing prices that's driving that. Some transportation, some automobile, if I remember from the last month's report, but mostly housing prices. And so we're still seeing the logjam with the higher interest rates and the unaffordability of the housing market. There's just not enough supply. The unemployment rate was 4.1% nationally, is lower in the Commonwealth. And so that we're still, there was an unanticipated bump in job growth in September from the loss. That was in August. Federal Reserve did act. They reduced their benchmark rate by half of a percentage point, pretty significant reduction. And so the average rate right now, their benchmark rate anticipated is about 4.75 to 5%. I made a couple of notes. I want to make sure I got... And so, of course, what that means, it's not directly correlated, but at a 4.75 to 5% target rate, eventually, that means the interest rate on our investments will start to come down. And so what we're looking at right now, looks to be just under 5% was the interest rate on most of our deposits with Carter Bank. It was just that little over 5% with the local government investment pool that we also invest in. So benchmark right now, we're about the upper end of what the Federal Reserve's benchmark rate would be. So just keep in mind, for the operating budget, we budgeted, anticipated a 3.5% interest rate. So we're still a percentage and a half away from action that the Federal Reserve can take over the course of this fiscal year and the next three quarters before we may be in a concerning situation to have to make up interest income. So even though they're dropping it, it was anticipated, staff planned for that, and the budgeted interest rate on our deposits is still well below where it is at this point in time. We'll continue to watch the next Federal Reserve meeting, or the Open Market Committee, which is the piece of the Federal Reserve that sets the rate, the benchmark rate, is November 6 and 7. So we'll have an update for you at the November meeting if they take further action. There was a planned, at their September meeting, reduction of the interest rate three or four times over the next kind of 12, 18 months was the plan. So all that's going to be driven by what's going on in the marketplace. And so with that, that is what I have for the financial report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? For Brian?
Question, Mr. Vice Chair. Brian, thank you for everything, your presentation. Just a question. How do we internally accrue our interest income? Is it on a monthly basis or quarterly basis?
Monthly basis.
It's monthly?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, because I know in the past, we've used interest income year before last to balance the budget.
Yes.
And so where is that income setting on a monthly basis in the interim during the year?
Pardon me. I'll get to it. Okay. So our interest income is essentially the revenue from the use of money and property. It's about 98% of that balance. There's some rent that we collect, tower rent, leases, and so some of that nature. The vast majority of that budgeted number of the $2,189,040 is interest income. And so we're sitting at 35% over the, you know, we anticipate at least 25%. So basically, as that is deposited monthly, or collected monthly from Carter Bank, that is posted to our bank account, or to our general fund. And so that's $766,349 that you see, the year-to-date revenues, if I could get this working again, right there. That is pretty much our interest income.
I have a wild question to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any merit to a suggestion that we use or redirect our interest income to our capital reserve? Is movement of that money possible and recommended?
So I would not, so what we did, we did have some extra, excess earnings, of course, last fiscal year. So if you remember, part of that year-end surplus was driven by extra interest earnings. And we did direct that, recommend, and the board did approve directing a lot of that to capital last month. I would say yes. I would say one thing to keep in mind is this interest is really only Carter Bank. It is not the LGIP interest on the $20 million. Davenport is coming next month.
Right.
We actually have been in discussions with Davenport on some planned uses for the interest on that LGIP investment for capital needs. So I think, Ms. Smith, you're, you've got a good, you're ahead of the game for what we're probably going to be bringing next month. But staff does anticipate and thinks it would be a good use of some of these interest earnings to help supplement capital, because we know that's a funding need for us.
Yeah, thank you for answering that, Brian, and I would just encourage the board to think in those terms. Given that we've had a recent evaluation of our CIP, and the seriousness at which we're moving on our designated growth areas and so forth, I think the interest income is a place to go while we have it, to redirect into the capital reserve, to help us along where we took those extra two cents off the tax rate back earlier to adopt the budget. And I think that would help us recover, at least in the interim, while we're yielding those types of levels of interest. So, Brian, thank you for sharing that, and I very much look forward to learning more about your recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Yes, we are certainly looking to maximize every dollar we can for that exact reason.
Thank you very much.
Being fiscal conservative. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving right along.
Okay. All right.
The occasional engineering services RFP award?
Yes, sir. And so do not have a presentation for that. It is executive summary in your agenda booklets. And you should have an amended summary that has a red stamp on it, updated today, October 15. So basically, the reason for that is the responses to the request for proposals were not due until Friday at 1:00. And so that was after the cutoff for the agenda packet. So we really updated those for you. That's most of the changes that were from what you already have in your agenda booklet, so. What occasional services are considered, really, another name for that is on-call. And so our procurement policy requires us, after you reach certain dollar thresholds, to obtain quotes, or to go out to bid, or a request for proposals, depending on that level. And so sometimes there are projects that, maybe it's an emergency, maybe it's, you know, an HVAC repair broken down, or maybe it's a smaller project that needs some engineering, but if you, it's under a tight deadline, and if we need to go for an RFP, that delays it another 30, 60, even 90 days, depending on the process. So a tool that local governments have, or what's called occasional services or on-call, this is specific to engineering, architecture engineering. And so there's some planning in there. There's also some surveying, so it was a little comprehensive in the RFP that was advertised. This is the second time. We had an original RFP, was advertised in 2019. It was for five years, or five one-year contracts. So at any point that one year, you could re-bid it or reissue the RFP if you wanted to. So the last renewal ends October 31. So it was time, again, the regular cycle of procuring for services to go back out. And so we did that. We pretty much reissued the same request for proposals. We did, as of the current contract, we have 14 companies that we contract with. We actually had 24 responses to this RFP, and that list is on page two of your executive summary, as far as who proposed. Most are local, regional. There are a few out of state, some areas. A lot are ones that we've either used in the past, we have a relationship with, or we know and would like to at least have on the list for possible work. So I think we're very familiar with this list. As far as the, I would like to read the note, which is that no firm is guaranteed any work. So what would happen at this process is we're going to request the board to award all 24, because it obligates us for nothing. And I think from the flexibility that it provides staff, what's going to happen in the next steps are, we have a standard contract that we provide to each of these firms. Mr. Quinn's office has already approved... Mr. Quinn's office has already proved that from previous, and so we worked through his office again to make sure all the wording is still acceptable. We send that out to the firms, they send back, sometimes they're back and forth, they accept all the terms of it. Once we have the contract, they will also submit a fee schedule. So essentially, if you have multiple firms, 24 in this case, we have 24 people competing against each other with their fee schedules to try and obtain any of the county work. Doesn't obligate us to use them. What we would be looking for, it's another five-year contract, but it's five one-year terms. So what we would do is we would ask the board to award it for the five years, but in those one-year term increments. So what staff would do is we would go through a renewal process at every one-year anniversary of that renewal date. And then we would get a new fee schedule, we would negotiate. If costs increased, we would have the flexibility to switch to a different firm if we needed some work done. The other thing that will allow us, if all of them came in, we, we're not obligated, so we could reissue the RFP and try and, and recognize some additional savings through competition. Basically, the, there is no additional budget asked for the board. If the project, if any of these services are utilized, funding will either have to come through their existing departmental budget, whether that's operating or capital depending on the need, or Mr. Whitlow or County Administration will bring that request to you for additional funding. Would have to be approved by the board to move forward at that point. But the, the only thing we're really doing at this point is awarding the RFP to those who propose so that staff can then follow up with the contract. And then as needed, we would use them as projects and the, as the county budget allows. So that's the overall synopsis of what staff is asking for. We have some, some possible board actions, but certainly be happy to go into a little more detail or answer any questions of the board.
Anyone have any questions? So Brian?
I'm sorry, I have to...
I got Dan first.
Good, Mr. Quinn, please.
So Brian, two questions. Do you have a feel for how much money you spend through this contract vehicle annually, roughly?
I do not have a feel for the annual spend because there's just multiple firms. So the problem we run into is some of the same firms have separate bids for us on other projects, and so it would be a little bit more difficult for us to track all that. It depends, it ebbs and flows on the project. And so I know some of the members of the team that did the review could probably speak to specific projects. So one thing that is in our policy, Mr. Quinn, is we have an $80,000 annual cap per project that's in our procurement code. So per each of the firms, the 14 that we have under contract now, we cannot spend more than $80,000 with either one of them.
Okay. And then the, the second question, if you have one of these occasional services that comes up, and you have multiple contractors on the list that can do the work, do you get informal quotes from them or do you just pick one and give it to one? Or how, how does that work?
This is a very decentralized process. So what I would say is typically the department manages that, and that's going to depend on the department running the project. I would say my preference would be yes, that we would reach out to multiple firms. But you, you're going to know because of the fee schedule what their hourly rate is. So even ahead of time, you're pretty much going to know what it's going to cost you. The only thing that may vary is the estimated hours that it may, that each firm may anticipate to complete the work. Yeah, yes ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Dan asked my two questions.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was great. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No other questions? We need a motion on this. Board, what's your pleasure?
We got one more question.
Okay.
Brian, where do you, who decide? You said it goes back to the department as to who picks these?
Typically, it's very decentralized. Once we have the award, the departments know their needs better, so they will spec out the project and they will work with the various firms that they're authorized to work with. Yes, sir. It doesn't come through a central approval process in finance or administration at that point. It would just be, obviously for budget perspectives, each administrative staff member over that department will make sure the funds were available. But it's not a centralized review as far as who authorizes the use of the contract.
The type of the project, you know, was it small, large? I mean, it's, if the department picks somebody, do they get your okay, get department's okay from it?
They would from a budgetary perspective to make sure that they had the money. But we are not contacted to say, I would like to use, for example, Timmons Group for X such project. That's not something that is centrally managed. Yes, sir.
Some of these, I mean, I'm assuming they know whether to get an architect or engineer one, right? Or A and E, depending on the size of the job, is what I'm getting at.
Yes. Well, and you know, if the job is large enough, of course, we'll go out for a separate RFP. But yeah, depending on the size of the job, what we will have are those fee schedules. And each of these companies, of course, have different services that they offer. So your specific was A and E, so you're correct. So we would have as staff a list of A and E firms. We have historically used, of course, that we had a good experience with or bad experience with. So not saying that may not play a factor in what the decision may be. But each department would have access to the fee schedule every year when we renew, and then they would look to see what would fit in their budget and what would work with their need, and then they would make that decision to, to request the services.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Randy, this might be a question for you. That presentation we were given, it was last year, it was designation of capital improvement projects about the different buildings and stuff, was that group one of these listed here?
Are you referring to the facilities master plans?
Yes.
Yes, that was spectrum design.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I don't really have a question, Mr. Chairman, more of a comment that a lot of our departments have a whole lot of bright minds, and I know that a lot of times we're required to do these studies and stuff. But some of these studies that I've sat and watched unfold weren't worth the paper they were written on. And I would express to county departments that if you think you have a good idea and you've got people who are smart enough to do it, just do it. And don't spend taxpayer money on some of these studies. That's my only comment.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, Board, what's your pleasure on this? There's a motion included in the executive summary.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to award the Occasional Services RFP to the selected firms and to authorize the county administrator or designate, in consultation with the county attorney, to execute agreements with such firms noted for planning, architectural, engineering, construction support, surveying, occasional services for the next five years as presented in this summary.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
All right. Mr. Carter, now the Benefits Consultant Services RFP?
Yes, sir, thank you. So we do periodically, it's best practice to, of course, procure for services. And so we, we have been about a little over 10 years since we last procured our benefits consultant. And so this would be the consultant that works with county staff for a lot of our, our insurances, our health insurance, our dental insurance, our voluntary benefits. And so they are pretty much what's considered the insurance broker. So they go between us and our insurance provider, for example Anthem for our health plan, to negotiate the best rate. They get data on claims experience, they provide an analysis to staff on where claims are trending. So when we come to you every year and say, claims are bad, we're going to need a 10% increase in our health insurance plan, the broker, this consultant firm are the ones that perform that work and, and advise staff on what would be the best course of action to mitigate the increases and how to best manage our, our plans, our insurance plans. So we've had for 10 years, it was Wells Fargo company name bought out and changed to USI Insurance Services. So being as those over 10 years since we had used them, last procured their services, we issued a separate request for proposals for benefit consulting. So we received eight responses, and we decided to interview four of those eight after staff from Administration, Finance, Human Resources reviewed the proposals. And so those four that we interviewed were USI Insurance Services, the incumbent, the One Digital, and Pierce Group, and Mark III. And so those were the, the four highest rated that we interviewed. And ultimately, when we, when we came down to it, staff did recommend, is recommending a change in our insurance consultant. It's not because of services, but frankly, I think any of the four firms we interviewed would do just fine for what the county needs. They were all qualified, all certainly capable. Ultimately, it came down to cost. And so the, the lowest price was, was Pierce Group Benefits at an annual cost of $29,000. Right now, we pay about $40,000, so that's about $11,000 less. And so within our current contract, and so, but it was still about $9,000 less than the next lowest annual cost. And so what we were able to procure this contract was a three-year contract, and we were able to lock in, we would be able to lock in that cost of $29,000 for three years. So essentially, that's about a $33,000 savings over the life of the contract from what we're paying today. And then we would have the option for two one-year renewals. Even with the three-year contract, there would be a provision in the contract for, if just, it just wasn't working, we would probably give somewhere between a 30, 60, or 90-day notice and reissue an RFP for additional services. So it's something that staff looked at seriously because we, as a general rule, there is a, a process when you change your provider that, of course, is work on staff, and, and there could be some, some dynamic there as we go through that process, what that looks like. Should not be an impact to the employee. Certainly, staff will work to mitigate that. But when we look at the decrease in price based on what we felt like the, the benefits we would be getting, reference checks were, were very good. We had a lot of these companies have local clients that are around us, and so we had some very good reference checks, felt very reliable on them. The other thing that we've got to look forward is this is the last year of our medical contract. So whoever we bring onboard is immediately going to have to be working on a request for proposals for new health insurance. And so we felt like any of the four would be capable of doing that, certainly have done it in their vast list of clients. So for us, it came down to, well, the, the best deal for the Franklin County taxpayer was Pierce Group Benefits. And so that's the, the recommendation of staff. Certainly happy to answer any board questions and look forward to a, a motion if so desired.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Brian, thank you for this information. I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Are compliance services and day-to-day services part of the scope of this RFP and the award, potential award?
Yes, ma'am. Compliance services as far as federal labor law and insurance, the new like Affordable Care Act and all of those items, assuming you'd be anticipated, but yes, that, that was part of the criteria for their request for proposals, and that would be part of any contract.
What about day-to-day services for the employees? Where they can pick the phone up and call?
We would have a, any of these have a service center. They vary depending on what. We're very particular about that as far as staff goes, that it has to be typically local or at least US-based for our employees to have access. I will say, Ms. Smith, that for the most part, our employees come to our human resources and payroll staff, they don't call an 800 number. So it's important for us as staff that we are comfortable with our account executive, that we can call and get our employees' answers to their questions.
That makes sense.
But both options are, are there, and so we would have that.
The only other question I had, are the commissions embedded?
So there are no commissions for, for the staple insurance benefits, held dental vision. There are commissions for voluntary, and that was across the board for all of the respondents. So one of the things that we as staff are monitor very closely when we have involuntary benefits or things like your cancer insurance, critical illness, hospital indemnity, those type things, a short-term disability. So we, right now, we have UNOM. That, that's not part of this award. That's, of course, a separate insurance carrier. That process will be coming up in the next year or two for a renewal, probably a reissuance of an RFP. But this broker would work on that for us. And I, I think, you know, that, that's part of, that was one of the bigger things we were looking at as part of our process of what is each, any carrier, any broker that we would select, what your process with commissions and voluntary benefits. You want you working for us, not for the commission. And so we felt like with any of them really, that we were pretty satisfied with their response. But the, the big insurance, especially the medical that drives our costs, according to at least what they, what they presented to us and what we were able to research on our own, is there, there's no commission based on your, your major medical, dental, and vision products.
So this is an apples-to-apples switch between consultants with USI, the offerings would still be equitable with the new firms?
The offerings, we feel they would be for what we use. And so, yeah, bigger firms may have a lot of fancy products, we just haven't used them. And so it probably was the case with USI. I think we, as a committee, went around and, and just said, well, what do, do any of these firms offer that would justify the cost? And ultimately, it's about value for the dollar. And so when we looked at the core services that we would need, it looked to be that all were equally prepared and capable. And so ultimately, it came down to, okay, well, who can do it for the most value, which is the lowest cost?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Quinn?
Brian, so this reminds me that I didn't like the acquisition strategy we had for the, the benefits plan in that we put it out to bid, and the first year was very competitive. But in the four forward years, we were really at the mercy of the provider. And I, and I understand the reluctance to go out to bid every year because it's a lot of work issuing that RFP. But it made me think that there are probably some metrics that we could have for those forward years so that the forward years are not a negotiated deal every year, but instead you look at the, the metrics that you put in place and you know exactly what your rate will be in the forward years. And, and so this company has a lot of experience with the 30 other counties and 100 school systems. And I can't imagine that they're following this similar strategy that we have. I, I would think that they would be looking at, at other ways to, to bid out their work. And so it'll be really interesting, I think, to get them, well, to get their point of view early on in, in terms of what best practices are for bidding out our benefits.
Right. Yeah, and so, and we'll certainly ask that. You know, our previous, currently, our USI recommends, and the guidance that we have received is, and this is just what I've seen in the local government industry, you start to lose competition because a lot of these insurance providers, specifically medical, they don't bid on one year. The volume's not there. They bid on two, three, four-year contracts. And so the advice to us from our current consultant was, you really only have two providers in this marketplace that has the network, and that's Anthem and Aetna. So if you, if you, if they can't make it cost competitive, neither one of them are going to bid, and then we're, we're stuck. And so that's the vice we heated with USI. I think certainly with a change in provider, we're going to, as I mentioned, Mr. Quinn, it's time for a request for proposals for medical. So I think we are going to look at the best contract we can negotiate that allows us the flexibility to save as much money as we can on those, give as much leverage as we can possibly obtain.
I know. And so when I think about metrics for the forward year, you know, they all, they always look at claims history, right? So they look, what did you do last year? And that becomes a big component of what your rate is going to be for the forward year. So that's fine. That's, that's very fair to have that metric be part of the equation for what the rates will be in the next year are, is your claim history in the prior year. And then there are probably others, you know, maybe there's like a CPI for medical, you know, somewhere. Or, and, and you could have a, a whole formula that said, okay, this is what we pay the first year, but here's the formula to, to, for years two through five.
Yeah, we will be happy to, to ask that.
Okay, this requires a motion as well. Board, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We award the Benefits Constant, Constant RFP to Pierce Group Benefits for a three-year contract from November 1, 2024 to October 31, 2027. Authorize the county administrator, county attorney, and deputy county administrator to sign all necessary documents to award the RFP and resulting contract.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson's absent for the vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Sandy?
Thank you. Brian took all my time, so I'll have to be quick.
That's our fault.
This is really primarily as a way of an update. We, we've talked a lot about the, the recent hurricanes and, and flooding and so forth, and so kind of timely in that sense that FEMA has undertaken a study of our area. And I just put this, this slide up just to show some of the other localities they're show some of the other localities they're looking at, kind of together in the same watershed. And so they've been, started a process where they studied our existing area and the existing flood maps, and they're proposing some changes to our maps. Our maps have been, have not been updated since two thousand eight, and two thousand ten is the last time that our maps were updated. So it's, it is something that's really, you know, due, and it's something they should be looking at to update. I'll go back just a little bit to talk about, really what we're talking about is the flood insurance rate maps. And so in Franklin County, we've had them since nineteen eighty-one flood insurance rate map. So we've been a participating community, whereas anyone that has a federally backed mortgage will get, be able to get flood insurance through this program, and in fact are required to get flood insurance through this program. But if, even if you don't have a federally backed mortgage, you can still get it through the FEMA program. And so again, those have been in place since nineteen eighty-one. They've been updated a, a couple of times through the years. Again, most recently, two thousand ten was our last update. And so recently, staff from the various localities you see on the screen there, we're giving an update from the consultant, some of the work that's been done recently, and some of the suspected kind of impacts or changes. And so just wanted to give you kind of a quick briefing on that. We're kind of at the, really at the early beginning parts of the stages. So over the next several months to a year, we'll be going through this process where they fine-tune those, any changes to the maps before those maps are officially adopted. And then those are the maps that mortgage lenders and realtors and, and insurance folks will be looking at to make determinations about whether a property is in the floodplain or out of the floodplain. So again, what they studied was really this Upper Roanoke River and really the Roanoke River Basin, which includes Pennsylvania, Bedford, Campbell, Franklin, Roanoke County, Roanoke City, and I believe Salem as well, at least a portion of Salem. So this was just kind of a breakdown. Zone AE, when it refers to that, that's, that's the, it's considered a floodplain, but it has actual elevation. So the E stands for elevation. Zone A is just considered floodplain, but it does not have elevations attached to it. And so this is just really a brief snapshot of kind of what they studied through this project. Again, just some additional information of the miles of, of stream. So for us, they restudied a total of seventy-two miles, and they restudied Zone A, three-eighty-seven, and they redelineated forty miles. And so you can see just as a comparison to, to Pennsylvania County, studied less, but actually redelineated more. Again, just kind of the same thing I just went over, just for Franklin County specific. And again, Franklin County specific, what was the, the focus area there, really the entire county for us, because, and so here, what they provided also was just kind of a, a snapshot or a dashboard of some information, and these were in your packet. But, you know, just a few things that we can look at is, is here, looks at repetitive losses. So that's one of the main things they look at, is those properties, especially now with hurricanes, and those properties where they're continuing to have a pay and pay and pay every time there's an event, they track that. And of course, your, your insurance is going to go up. But really, with all these, and all these events, it's really affecting all of our insurance. It's, it's going to really so. But this kind of gives a snapshot of, of those claims that have been paid, the number of policies. So here, there's a hundred flood insurance policies in, in place in the county. And again, these are required for federally backed mortgage. So if you don't have a federally backed mortgage, you don't have to do this. And, and so this is a snapshot, six hundred and sixty estimated structures in the flood hazard area. I draw your attention to the, kind of the bottom right is, is kind of the impact of this study, is that they're estimating there's going to be a hundred and forty-five structures that'll now be considered in the floodplain that previously were not. And then they took out fifty. So we have a net of about a hundred plus or minus that, based on what they're proposing, will, will now be in the floodplain. They also did it for Boones Mill, obviously much smaller, but, but Boones Mill has a significant floodplain area as the, the river stream flows right through there. They also did it for Rocky Mount, which kind of has less floodplain impacts. And then they broke it down to just the unincorporated area as well. So just, just some snapshots of, of that. The FEMA Map Center is, is really where information can be found about any locality in the country as far as their FEMA maps. You can look them up. So for the public that is curious about the maps and where to find them and any information about revisions, this FEMA Map Flood Center, or FEMA Map Service Center, would be the place to go to find that information. And as we move through this process, there'll also be a, a community or public engagement process that'll be part of this prior to those maps becoming official from FEMA. Now, I should say, we're allowed to comment on these, and, and that's where I'm going to go with this whole discussion. But really, in the end, it's FEMA who decides, you know, what these maps look like, who's in the floodplain and who's not. That's really, these are FEMA federal maps, federal insurance maps. And so kind of, it is important for us to, to comment, obviously, and, and express any concerns we have. But I guess what I'm saying is we have little control over the final outcome of, of these maps. So locally or statewide, DCR is Department of Conservation and Recreation. They're kind of the, the state entity that kind of manages the floodplain. And so here's a link as well to the Virginia Flood Risk Information System. Again, if, if people are looking for more information about flood mapping and floodplains, this would be the place to go. So really, all of this points towards floodplain management and protecting structures from, you know, flooding events, hurricanes, whatever may be in our area. It's more river, river flooding. And so just a couple of notes to, to point out is that communities must regulate based on these flood, firms' flood insurance rate maps. Development should be reasonably safe from flooding. So as we review building permits and other development proposals here at the county, we're looking at these maps to determine if they fall in one of these designated areas. Based on that, there are certain requirements for building. If you're in a flood zone, you're not actually able to, to build a habitable structure except under very limited circumstances. And so again, just reflecting back on some of the recent incidents that have happened. Now, I think the North Carolina examples maybe are, are, are extreme examples. But generally, we're, we're trying to get buildings away from those rivers and away from those creeks, getting them elevated up. So when we do see those increased water levels, that these properties are protected. Now, I don't know what they considered those storms in North Carolina, but I would say that there was probably some that never thought they would see water, I'm sure, that, that did in that case. But we, we do try to manage as best we can in these floodplain potentially areas. We want to elevate them, and we want to do different things with the mechanical systems and electrical systems to, to try to alleviate any impacts on the structures. So again, I just mentioned briefly kind of about the timeline, but this is kind of the timeline that they sent us. So we are really, the, the, the meeting was in this area, or here, I'm sorry, the meeting was in this area. What they've told us is we have thirty days to respond with, with comments to these maps, initial comments from the county. So that's the period we're in, and that period ends on October twenty-fifth. Staff has a, we have a group of staff folks who are looking over these maps and kind of generating some of those comments. We have some specific comments, but there's also some general comments, and I'll just kind of jump into those. One is, one big one is Smith Mountain Lake. Smith Mountain Lake is, properties along the lake do fall in the floodplain. And so lots of those properties, and many of you are familiar with those, lots of those properties, those, the structures are well above the lake. However, because part of their property falls in the floodplain and it touches the lake, a lot of those property owners have to go through a process of disputing that their house is outside of a flood hazard. And so they have to either hire an engineer or surveyor, in most cases, to go out and fill out a form, or do a letter, what's called a letter of map amendment, to change the actual map to show that their structure is outside of any designated flood area. And once they do that formal process, they don't have to pay for flood insurance. Some people won't go through that process. They'll just go ahead and pay the flood insurance, figuring it's, it's probably just cheaper to do it that way. So there are processes that come into place, but where we see a, a, a big impact is at the lake. And, and one of the things we're questioning as a staff is, is what those elevations are. So I'll throw out some numbers, but, but full pond at the lake is seven ninety-five, seven hundred and ninety feet elevation. The study area and the, the project boundary area is eight hundred feet above sea level, or eight hundred feet contour. Where they currently have our floodplain designated is eight oh two point two. So eight hundred and two feet point two is, is where they say the flood limit is. So that does obviously have an impact on property owners. So property owners at the lake are already restricted below eight hundred. They cannot build below the eight hundred foot contour. But if they're within that eight oh two point two, they still will be subject to flood insurance. I don't know how those numbers have come to be. I don't know why they exist the way they exist. And oddly enough, I was telling Supervisor Smith is, I didn't know until last week that Bedford County's base flood elevation is actually different than ours for the lake. I don't know why that is. And so those are some of the comments that, that we're going to generate. Maybe some further explanation of those numbers, because those numbers do have an impact on our citizens in, in having to either get flood insurance or, or go through a process to get out of requiring flood insurance. So Bedford County's is about half a foot lower than ours. And so I don't know if it tilts or, or what, but I would think the elevation would be the same on both sides of the lake. So those are the sorts of questions that we have, is, is how did those numbers come to be? What's the rationale? Why is it higher than eight hundred if the, if the water, theoretically, the water will never be over eight hundred feet. And so why are we two and a half feet above that? But those are the sorts of comments that we would like to issue. We do have some specific ones that we've identified as well, that we have some questions and concerns about. And so we'll be working to generate a letter with the board's approval. And that's really the only motion or action that I was looking for was just either a motion or concurrence to, for staff to go ahead and file some of those comments that we have initially and get those into FEMA's hands. So maybe they'll make some changes to, to modify those. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have another process later where we'll actually have another opportunity for, for some feedback as we get closer to actually those maps becoming official. So that's really just kind of a quick update, and happy to provide any additional information if you need it beyond what was in your packet, or happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, just looking for support for, for a letter to send up.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mr. Sandy, you and I have talked about this. One of the things, and I don't know if it's embedded in staff comments or not, we were victim of having to go through this process with FEMA. And my comment is, and it's, you guys probably know this, when they have taken fifty lots off of their list, according to the report, are they looking at those properties that really are not subject to flooding, like, for instance, ours was? For families to have to go through these processes arduous, and it's expensive. And, I mean, so are, do they just throw everybody in the pot and say, if you've got a federally backed mortgage, you've got to do, you've got to purchase flood insurance unless you can prove through a process otherwise?
Yeah, that's generally how it works. Yeah. And so the way it, so the number that you referred to is actually structure. So there's a lot more parcels that are actually fall in the floodplain, but they may be vacant. And so typically, when it's a structure, is, is that insurance company or lending agency is going to want to, they're going to want to make you get flood insurance unless, like you said, unless you can demonstrate through a process and through a, a form that they have, that you're outside of, of that area. And so I think what, the reason we're seeing additional structures come in is because they're delineating more areas within the floodplain. So areas that previously were not designated as floodplain are now designated. And so that's what, that's really what the hundred and fifty structures are. The, the negative is because there was some nuances and some adjustments in some areas. What they've tried to do as part of this process is kind of true up their maps based on better technology and better topographic information. So probably for an instance like yours, probably didn't change. I haven't looked specifically at yours, but it probably did not take you out. You're still probably in what's considered the floodplain, or at least your parcel is.
Yeah, because we're exempted now because-
Your, your house is likely five to ten feet above the flood elevation, but your parcel is still, falls within the floodplain. And so a lot of times, those lending agencies, they're simply looking at a map that says, oh, parcel XYZ is in the floodplain, so you've got to have flood insurance.
I just bring that comment forward as a, a real-life example of what's being experienced by residents at the lake.
Yeah.
And anything that you think would be an appropriate remark to that end, if you feel it appropriate?
And the other thing with that is, I forget the number, there was the number of how many people, two hundred and some, that have already done what you did, is making sure that that information carries forward and that those, you know, as those maps change, that you're not having the same, let's say you refinanced, that you're not having to go through that process again. And so making sure that that information kind of moves forward is also something where, you know, we want to make sure that the, the dollars that people had to spend, that they didn't kind of waste it, that it's still valid. And, and then again, that big discrepancy, I think, between Bedford and Franklin as far as the elevation, you know, it's only like half a foot, but it's still half a foot, and it's half a foot less. So in my opinion, we should at least be the same as that. But I really think it should be lower, you know, lower than that.
Will you bring a report back to the board?
We'll, we'll provide a copy of-
Be on the road when we get some-
Sure, yeah, further update.
Thoughts?
Yeah, and we'll provide a copy of the letter that goes out in the, in the Friday packet.
In the form, I'm talking about when FEMA comes back and says, this is the, this is the end product?
Yes. Yeah, we can do another update at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one comment, and you may or may not remember this, Steve, but I had a constituent, it doesn't just affect the lake. I had a constituent that was on the upper end of the Blackwater River, up on a very high hill, and it was low, and they were trying to sell their house, and it got held up by the bank because these older maps showed it being in a floodplain, and it really wasn't. Do you think these, some of these houses or parcels they've taken out, maybe they've addressed those issues?
That's, that's a lot of it, is, is kind of correcting those technology issues. You know, obviously, they're not doing a physical survey of, of all the properties, so they're just going off overlaid maps. And so, yeah, that, that's supposed to be what some of the refinements are, is, is kind of fine-tuning some of those issues. But you're exactly right. You know, we've got some river areas where people are a hundred feet above the water, but their property goes all the way down to the, to the river. And so they're-
Also men?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
So I'm hearing, no issues with moving forward with the comment letter?
Okay. Do you need a motion or consensus sign?
There, there's a sample motion in your packet, but I think just a concurrence is also fine.
I see. Everybody nodding, so go forward.
We'll move forward then.
All right. This time, we're going to take a break. We're going to take about ten minutes and reconvene back in B- seventy-five for our work session. Board, I would suggest that you grab dinner and take it back, and we'll have dinner back in B- seventy-five. And the first will be on special use permit being filed by Michael and Janet Mercer pertaining to property located at Seventy Allen Drive. Following that hearing, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed boundary adjustment agreement with the town. Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Tatum and members of the board. We are here this evening, as you said, for a special use permit for the Mercers. They're the applicants. Their property is Zoned R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. What they are here for is for a home, second, second single-family detached dwelling on a lot. They happen to be located in the Westlake Hales Ford Designated Growth Area, and their future land use designation is suburban residential, two units per acre. There are no dwellings on the parcel at this time. However, the owner applicant plans to submit building permit applications for this cottage, which will eventually become the second single-family detached dwelling on the lot after the main dwelling, which we would consider the primary dwelling, is constructed. So along with these two dwellings, he, also, the Mercers have proposed a workshop garage to be constructed on this property. And the owners will occupy the cottage as a second dwelling once they finish construction on the primary structure. The sizes, the cottage will be about fifteen hundred- The sizes, the cottage will be about 1,500 square feet, two bedrooms, two baths. The main primary dwelling will be close to 6,000 square feet. It'll have four bedrooms, four and a half bathrooms, and the workshop garage will be approximately 3,000 square feet with one bathroom. They would like to construct the cottage first, and the owners will occupy this home, like I said, until their main dwelling is built. They're hoping to pull all the permits and try to do all the construction, especially on the home and the workshop at the same time. And they can, the applicant could go into more detail of how they plan to do the construction. They do have a permit from the Virginia Department of Health for six-bedroom septic, which would definitely be enough, a septic system for what they need on the property. The property happens to be a corner lot. It's on a state-maintained road, Mary Monroe Way Road 666 and Island Drive, which is a private road. Before the Planning Commission public hearing, we did receive one call and one email requiring about the application. We also received one call concerning about the lack of an HOA in the area, as well as possible subdivision of the property. The Mercers have not talked to our office about subdividing the property, and I don't think that is their intention. We'd like to give you a vicinity map, but before I go to that, I do want to mention at the public hearing for the Planning Commission, we did have five people that spoke, and all five were against for various reasons, from the septic system to the subdivision, having a water, a private water company, about the drain field, the size of the workshop, and what it might be used for, about the different septic systems, would they have to have two or just one drain field, just to give you an idea, and maybe some of those will be here this evening to speak. This is the vicinity map that we like to share. Also, we'd like to give you an aerial. The property is in the blue. It goes along with this subdivision. At one time, they were separate lots, but the lots have been combined to make one large lot, about 3.89 acres. Here's Mary Monroe, and here's the private road, Island Drive. The comprehensive plan has this listed as suburban residential, two units per acre. It is in the Westlake Designated Growth Area, as I stated prior. It also is Zoned R1, and you'll notice that most of the property, or all the property surrounding this is residential. You do have some A1 residential up here. Just in case you didn't go, be able to go see the property, one of the planners took some pictures. It just shows the proximity to the lake, how large the lot is, and this is the existing boat dock. Just as analysis, this area is mostly vacant lots or constructed with single-family dwellings. The second dwelling would generate similar amounts of noise and traffic of any single-family residence. Keep in mind that when you look at the R1 district, we do not think, or the Planning Commission does not think, the character of the district would be changed. You have an average lot size anywhere from less to five acres or up to 7,500 square feet. It's probably going to depend on if you have public water and sewer. Regulations in the R1 district are designed to maintain neighborhood stability and promote suitable environment for family life, and this use would meet that intent of the district. The second dwelling would be in harmony with the purpose and the intent that I just read for the use, especially being single-family dwellings. That's what you expect to find in your R1 zoning district. The comprehensive plan would support the different types of dwelling units that are as appropriate use that you find in suburban residential, two units, residential, two units per acre, and a second single-family would be allowed on this lot. The future land use does say that the density could be two to four dwelling units per acre. Therefore, the size of this lot being almost four acres would definitely support the two dwelling units. Just remember that you use in accordance to Section 25-638 when you're making your decision on a special use permit, and it is, was also determined that the second dwelling would not be substantially detriment to the adjoining property owners for the size of the lot and the second dwelling being a single-family dwelling that will be used for family members once the primary structure is built. The Planning Commission held their public hearing. They approved the special use permit with five conditions on a 7-0 vote, that the special use permit to authorize just this one second dwelling. So in other words, you'll have the main dwelling, the second dwelling, only on the property. If any more residential dwellings shall be built, they would have to come back to through the process. The occupant of the second dwelling, once the primary structure is built, can only be used for family members in accordance to Section 25-232. In reference to Condition 2, the property owner shall reflect this use in an occupancy affidavit approved by the Planning and Community Development Department, and it will be recorded in the Clerk of Circuit Court office once this dwelling is used as a second dwelling. The second dwelling shall have its own address that will be clearly visible and displayed for 911 emergency services, and the address shall be posted so it's visible from Island Drive as well as the dwelling itself. And the applicant and property owner will have to obtain all permits for all the structures from the Building and the Planning Department to use and occupy the second dwelling. I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Cooper? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one, Ms. Cooper. You said the neighborhood has a water system, but it looks like they have plans for a well. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Somebody spoke about the private, private water company so that they wouldn't have to drill, drill a well, but that would be up to the Mercers that they wanted to get on with that private water company.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I reserve mine.
Okay.
After the public hearing.
All right, I don't see anyone else. Are the Mercers here?
I think they are.
We are?
Yes.
Okay, would they like to speak in regards to?
If you have a specific question.
Anyone have any questions for the Mercers?
Thanks.
I don't think anyone does.
I just have a big family.
Okay.
And we have another family that lives here. Can you come up?
Come on up.
I'd be glad to hear from you.
Will, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Janet Mercer, the spouse of Mike, and the address that we're going to build on is 70 Island Drive. We're currently in a rental in Monita. And we just have, I have a big family, and part of that family has a cabin up in Minnesota, and they'll sleep 25 in this cabin and get a whole bunch of family members together, and they really set it up that way. And that generation of our family is getting older and not very many of them left anymore. And we talked about this, and I know our neighbors like think we're trying to build too much, but it's our intent to be able to have our family members come and visit us and do a very similar sort of thing for our family. So anyway, I just wanted to pass that on.
Okay, thank you. All right. Right along, we'll open the floor now for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for this?
I only had the Mercers signed up.
Okay. All right. Is anyone here that would like to speak in regard to this zoning request? Okay, seeing none, I will close the floor for public comment. Okay, board? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. First of all, I'd like to welcome the Mercers. Thank you for your application. I just, just had just a couple, few things here. With respect, Ms. Mercer, to your comment about the large family and, you know, over time, the family, of course, is getting smaller, can you come up to the podium so I can make sure that everybody can hear you? Thank you so much. My question is, do you envision this to look something or behave like a short-term rental? Is it, is it going to be something that's consistent, or is it sporadic holidays?
No, it's, no, it's intended to be for holiday use. I have family. It, we don't, we don't have any intent to do a short-term rental. I wouldn't want to get into that business.
Well, they're prohibited in, in R1, but I just didn't know if, you know, the fact that.
No, it's, it's like having family come out to visit for a week or two weeks at a time. I could envision my sister coming out from Colorado, maybe even staying part of the summer with us.
Sure.
And so, no, it's just family use.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Cooper, would you mind coming up?
Yes.
On the conditions that the Planning Commission have approved, has approved, I would like to ask my colleagues, and I want to ask you about the appropriateness, I would like to add Condition Number 6, which speaks to AEP on the paragraph above the Commission's recommendation. Mr. Holdhauser opined on AEP and just clarified the issue about the S&amp;P and the 800-foot and so forth. And in Number 5, we talk about permits from the Franklin County Building and Planning Departments, but we don't say anything about AEP. And if it would be the pleasure of the board, I would like to add a Condition 6 that articulates basically what AEP has said in the development team comments. Do you think that is appropriate in your planning expertise?
You, you could definitely make that a condition, and you could always put that the applicant and owner shall attain all required permits from Appalachian or AEP.
Yeah.
And you don't have to list everything that's listed. We could just do it as simple as that.
I just want a simple condition, but just basically, it just looks like to me almost an oversight that we didn't pick up on AEP's comments, and I just would like to add that.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Vice Chair. I find that the use will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for special use permit with the amendment of Condition Number 6 to articulate AEP's stated position on individual permitting required through AEP, and that this be for the purpose of a home and second, single-family detached dwelling on a lot in accordance with Section 25-223 of the zoning ordinance with the six conditions recommended, oh, excuse me, that would be with the five conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call, please?
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
All right, thank you. All right, moving right along, our second hearing tonight is on a proposed boundary adjustment agreement between the county and town of Rocky Mount. Our county attorney, Mr. Jim Gwynn, will begin this hearing. Mr. Gwynn?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an agreement that has grown of several agreements that were occurring at the same time with regard to fire safety, along with some sewer increased capacity and the like. Much of the boundary adjustments in this situation, part of it involves property that the town owns in the county that was contiguous, that we're going to work the boundary around. Part of it is to, there's some subdivisions that are split that we're going to be able to put in the same jurisdiction. There are, there are also folks who are town customers, water, sewer utility customers that will be able to be moved over, and it was a matter of, the last part of it, and I'm, I can picture it in my head, but describing it is, is more difficult, but there's an area that the town will be able to develop more fully from the standpoint of counties, as you know, in Virginia don't build roads, and there are some roads that need to be upgraded, areas that need to have roads put in that is part of this that the town will be able to handle. We can't do that because VDOT does that, and the town's in a better position to do it. So we think it's a, an agreement that would both enhance a lot of the citizens' property as well as their opportunities, and at the same time, hopefully, put us in a position where there'll be more development, which would mean more tax dollars, both for the county and the town.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone, well, first, before we go to that, anyone have any questions for Mr. Gwynn? If not, I'll open the floor for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
Van Dammeus.
If you will, state your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Meus.
Sir?
State your name and address for the record, please.
I will. My name is Van Dammeus. I am retired pastor after 37 years, former moderator of the Pigg River Missionary Baptist Association, and I came to talk to you about the annexing of the Highland Hill area. Now, there's a, there's quite a few people over there, it's about 100 and some families, they're still building over there in that area. And my concern is that some of the people that live over there, they're old, retired, they're just living off Social Security, and I don't think that they're going to be able, they're not going to be able with what they're getting on Social Security to pay a double tax. Also, this is not my first rodeo, I've been in here before, and I talked to y'all about building another exit. We only have one exit, and it's across a railroad track, and that's just a catastrophe to be, to happen at some time or another. It might not be in my lifetime, but sometime or another, something's going to happen and those people are going to be blocked in over there. We don't need an emergency way out, we need a street to get out from over there, and if something comes up. I would hate to have it, you know, to have it that some people over there might not be able to get around this and that and the other, or was catch fire over there or something like that, or the train must wreck over there. It would be impossible if it was blocked, if I, driveway was blocked, the street was blocked, to get out from over there. So I'm asking, I don't know whether y'all are going to annex it or not ask, I'd rather not, I'd rather that it wouldn't be annexed, but if you all decide to do it, I'm going to ask you a question, will you build us another exit out of there? I think it's on the right that we should have another exit out of there. It's a mighty poor groundhog, ain't got one hole. And we need, we need something done about that. And we also, I'm speaking for the tact, the people that live on the, live on the hill, that don't have the finances to probably pay. finances to probably pay two taxes, and somebody's going to lose their homes behind that, and I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want that to happen. I'm not worried about that for myself, but it's for the people over there. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm disabled, and I don't have to worry about paying property taxes. That's one thing I don't have to worry about doing. But I am, I am so, well, I know it, I hear you beeping. But we need to really do something about the people over there, and I think it'd be a good idea if we didn't have being annexed. It's quite nice, people nice.
Thank you, Ms. Meus.
Amen.
So can I get an answer?
No, sir. This is not a two-way conversation. This is a public, this is a time for the public to speak.
Oh, okay, okay.
The Board doesn't speak at this.
Now, when can we get an answer?
I think the town's going to meet on this later on, so it'll be the final decision.
Thomas Young?
Mr. Young, if you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Michael Young, 60 Belmont Drive, Rocky Mount, which is in the Tanglewood Hills subdivision. I am not really in favor of this annexation, and I don't really understand the reason for these particular parcels of land being selected to be annexed, particularly in regards to the reason that was given in the statements published on the website under "Why are the town and county proposing a boundary line adjustment?" It says, "There is also an issue of equity or fairness. People that live just outside of town limits typically enjoy and receive many, sometimes all, of the benefits of town services, but they do not pay town taxes. This means that existing town residents and businessmen essentially subsidize town service for all of those that are living outside of town limits, a situation that can be argued is unfair for town residents and businesses." Frankly, I'm insulted by this statement, because I, as a resident of Tanglewood Hills, in the county part, now the town part, have been paying a higher water rate and sewer rate for almost 40 years. So the town, to me, seems to have benefited by me being on town water and paying a higher rate than town residents. And if the logic of the annexation is to make it fairer for the residents of town to not have to subsidize me anymore as a moocher off of town, I don't see why other parts of the county that have access to town water are not being annexed also. So I need a better explanation as to why these particular parcels are being annexed. Also, in the statement, there's another part that is not accurate. For example, "Many people that currently live outside of town limits in Tanglewood Hills or Diamond Avenue, Circleview Street, Highland Hills Road cannot get out of their neighborhood without driving on streets that are maintained by the town." I do not know about these others, I only know about Tanglewood Hills. When I moved in in 1985, there were no roads in the Tanglewood Hills subdivision in the town of Rocky Mount. You entered off of Scuffling Hill Road into the block I live on, which is entirely in the county. So if you're putting out statements about reasons for annexation, and you have things that aren't accurate in there, I think you need to investigate and explain a little more about why you're annexing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ben, and I can't make out the last name.
Pinkert. Ben Pinkert.
That's your name, Ben, for the record.
Benjamin Neil Pinkert, Sr., 125 River View Street, Rocky Mount. Been a long time since I appeared before an august body like this, but I've got a little information here, but might approach the council, the Board, excuse me. This is your map of the proposed boundary adjustment. It says, in A, there's a total of $82,000. B, 583,600. C, 237,100. E, 8,449,300. F, 305,000. G, 5800. So a total of 134,877,700. That's a lot of them. Well, the mayor says 159,600.
Go back to the mic so everybody can hear you, please. Go ahead, back to the mics, everyone can hear you.
There's 159,600, according to the mayor. Y'all say 134,87700. Well, I say 39,904,100 is all the real estate in that whole annexed boundary adjustment. Here's another one we got. This is Diamond Avenue extension. What do y'all see? What do y'all see here? What do you see? I don't see anything. 25 million and so many dollars.
Go back to the mic, please.
Uh-oh, I'm loud enough for everybody to hear. 25,637,900 in all of that huge area. Mount, third $2,500 worth of revenue a year? You know, I don't, you know, I'm a little bit perturbed about the mayor. I wonder where he got 159,600 worth of tax base, when it's 39 million?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Pinkert. Your time's up. Thank you for your comments.
Been up already? Well, I was going to crack down on y'all on the sewer plant. Y'all screwing us on the sewer plant, too.
Thank you for your comments.
You'll leave those 400,000 gallons to brood in Rocky Mount of all kinds if the sewer plant thing goes through. 400,000 gallons. We get to 94%, we get to probably a 10- or 15-million-dollar expenditure. We're getting screwed.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Pinkert. Next speaker, please.
I have no further speakers signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone else here in the gallery tonight that would like to speak in regards to this? Okay, seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment.
I'll just have a couple of comments. I wish we could have heard the rest of Mr. Pinkert's comments. I think there's a lot of valid information there that's going to be more detrimental to the town, which I represent, versus the county. Mr. Meus, as far as your comments, if this does go through, it would be up to the town to build that road. That's one reason for this annexation, is to get it into one body so you all can get an in or an out. So I would recommend that you show up at the town council meeting and talk to them about the road, if this goes through. For me personally, I wish that the fire truck had been separated out from this as one entity, so that we could put that to rest and then move forward with the rest of this, but it didn't work out that way. So my vote, when it comes to a vote, is going to be for the funding of the fire truck is the main thing for me, and I don't know what the rest of you all think.
Board, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Supervisors of Franklin County approve the boundary adjustment agreement with the town of Rocky Mount and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute it and proceed to obtain approval of the agreement by the Circuit Court of Franklin County. And before we vote, could we have Mr. Jim, or the Gwynn, or the county administrator explain to the public how this is going to play out once we vote on it here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on this motion? Okay, we have a second by Mr. Jamison. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a final vote?
I'm happy to respond to Mr. Carter.
You want to respond, or you want us to finish the vote first?
I'd like for him to explain to the audience, before we vote,
Okay.
how this will all play out, if it passes both the county and the town.
Go ahead, Mr. Gwynn.
If both town and the county pass the boundary adjustment agreement, there will then be notice given to all the properties that are affected by the boundary adjustment. That notice will include a copy of a petition to the court to approve the boundary adjustment, since it's been done by agreement. Those who have received the notice, I think the statute says that if one-third of that group decides that they want to make an appearance or whatever, then there'll be a full-fledged hearing that's held on it, and then it'll be up to a judge to decide whether or not to approve the agreement.
Okay. With that said, is there any other discussion before we take a final vote? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
All right. Okay, moving along. Do we have any committee appointments by any board members? I saw the one that was given, it's in the Boone District, so Ronnie's not here. Does y'all see this one?
Yes. I did see that.
Okay, there's not a vacancy for it. Okay, so we can set that aside. All right. Anyone else have any committee assignments before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, I'm going to have a slot for Gilsecreek on the Planning Commission, effective January 1. So I will be in search of a replacement for that seat, and if anyone wants to express an interest, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have anything before we go to public comment? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached a time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the Board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the Board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the Board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the Board or county. Personal attacks or insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the Board and that are not a function of local government and over which this Board has no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question-and-answer session, and Board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the Chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon a second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for this?
Mr. Keith Johnson?
Okay. Mr. Johnson? State your name and address for the record, please, as soon as you get through passing those out.
My name's Keith Johnson. I live at 190 Leaning Oak Road in Boone's Mill. I'm here tonight, I've been here a few times, to talk about pornography in our local schools. At the school board meeting last night, I heard talk about the $70 million capital improvement fund for the Career Technical Education Building. They talk about it as though it's a done deal. They are not considering alternatives, based on what I heard last night. Correct me if I'm wrong, it appears the plan is to increase taxes to fund the CTE building for public schools that has declining enrollment, and continue the politically motivated ideology to collect, store, and make available to our children books with vulgar stories about sex. Please don't do this. You are the leaders of our community. Please use your leverage for positive change in our schools. You don't lose your rights as a citizen when you're elected. You have the right and obligation, in my opinion, to express to the school board your displeasure with their pushing immoral sexual attitudes onto our children. On a side note, did you know that the two high school librarians quit their job? Would you want to keep that job if you were required to read and approve these vulgar books? Also, I held a book in my hand used by the elementary school that had entire pages blocked, The cost of print materials, stuff envelopes, and postage is eleven thousand dollars. I'm hoping to get donations to help pay for the survey. So far, I have commitments of a few thousand. If you or anyone you know wants to help remove the porn from the schools and make a contribution to the survey, please let me know. My phone number's on the handout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's all I have signed up.
Okay. Do we have anyone here that did not sign up that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment. And moving on to other matters for supervisors, I will start over here to my immediate left with Mr. Jamison. You have anything?
The only thing I'd like to say is voting time, and urge everybody to get out and vote. It's important election.
Okay, going to my right, I'm gonna come back over here, coming over here to Mr. Quinn.
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. I see that Mr. Mitchell stepped out, so Mr. Carter?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Ms. Smith?
I'm gonna hold mine.
You what?
I'm gonna hold mine, so I have nothing for now.
Okay. Did Mr. Mitchell leave, or?
He's here.
Okay, he said he had to check out. Okay. I just have one thing, in lieu of the recent storms that have hit part of our state in North Carolina and Tennessee, and then the other storms, and possibility of having more coming up, I would like, I think we need to get with public safety and the Sheriff's Department and review our critical incident policy and procedures as far as critical incident plan. I don't know when the last time it was updated, but I do not want to see us get caught. That storm so easily could've come, you know, further east, and we could've seen massive damage, so I don't wanna see us get caught with our hands thrown up in the air and not knowing what to do. So, let's, let's get together and put together a plan. I know we have one, let's see how it needs to be updated, see what we need to do to make it more, things we needed to consider. Do we have enough shelters in the county? If there's a mass power outage, do we have enough shelters throughout the county? Do, you know, how, how can we assure basic necessities, you know, from, from our standpoint? And maybe we're lucky county in the region, but maybe our neigh, one of our neighbors gets hit hard, and we wanna be available to assist our neighbors as well. So, I'm just throwing that out there, something for future discussion. Mr. Carter?
You, you kinda sparked something I was thinking about the other day, and that's the water treatment plant. Sits right on the banks of the Blackwater River, within, I don't know, a hundred yards or less, and I don't know if that's our responsibility or the town, but that needs to be looked at as potential mitigation if there was a disastrous flood. I know, I think we're tied into that new water line, but I don't know if it goes to that plant or bypasses it, but that should be looked at.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, excellent thoughts and so forth regarding local emergency operations planning. We are required by code of Virginia to have an emergency operations plan. We do, and it has been updated in recent years, but it's not to say with recent events, I know a lot of national attention on local emergencies. So, what, what we can do, certainly, I think, as a board to assist, and I was sharing with the chairman earlier, I don't think anyone prior to 2019 thought that Franklin County would ever experience an F3 tornado, and we did. And so, when that happens, we, we declare local emergencies and our emergency operations plans put in place. We have our emergency operations center here in the building now, was recently relocated. We have a very active local emergency planning committee that includes the towns of Boone's Mill and Rocky Mount. It also includes the water wastewater treatment plant, Mr. Carter, that you mentioned, in addition to local health department, Salvation Army, there's a lot of those things, but it's a reminder to me that the governing body often is not necessarily involved in these local emergency planning committee meetings. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Tatum, to your point, we certainly could get information out to the board about our emergency operations plan, but even a step further, maybe a review of that would be helpful at some point with, with, with our local board, for you as, as the locally elected Board of Supervisors, to, to hear about that, and we can work with our public safety director and, and emergency staff to pull, pull that, maybe a session together for the board at a future board meeting.
Absolutely. I, you know, I, we, I would hate for, you know, a year from now, storm come through, and we get hammered, and we say, boy, I wish we had planned better. You know, if we'd only known that we needed, you know, six sites to where people could go for, you know, water, you know, whether it's fire departments or schools, what for shelters, we need to make sure that, one, if we identify this location as a shelter, make sure that location has what it needs to, to supply the people that may call on it, because it's no good to send, to tell people, okay, if you live in Glade Hill, you can go to Glade Hill Fire Department for, you know, hot shower, hot food, whatever, and then we don't have the resources there. We need to make sure that we don't get caught flat-footed on this. But thank you, and, and that's something we need, let's, let's jump on that, and, and, you know, all the entities, the sheriff, public safety, town of Rocky Mount, the school system, you know, water and sewer, landfill, I mean, Eric, there's, there's roles for, there's plenty of roles to go around, and I just wanna make sure we don't, because I know a lot of these localities, I know Eric was just telling us earlier, you know, their guys went down and helped places in North Carolina. I'm sure those localities never dreamed that they would've seen, I mean, I've been through Chimney Rock years ago, it's no longer there. And, you know, that's, you know, you can't plan for everything, but if you don't plan, you know, the old saying, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. Let's make sure that we don't fall into that. Thank you. Anybody have anything before we wrap it up? We need to go into closed session, so I will have Supervisor Smith to read the motion, please.
I will, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. I would move that Franklin County Board of Supervisors enter into closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, et cetera. A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property. A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry. A7, consultation with legal counsel on briefings by staff about litigation or other specific matters requiring legal advice. A29, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, you take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell is absent. Vice Chair Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
All right, we will reconvene, y'all wanna go back to ARC or B75?